All right. Good afternoon. After that quick recess and switching over to technology, we are ready to go for the workshop that's scheduled this afternoon. I don't have any public comments, so I think we are good there. We must have commented themselves out in the board meeting. So let's jump right into workshop items. First item is discussion of the Audit Committee Charter, RFQ process, and the timeline that prevails from that. So I will give it away to our representative for the Audit Committee. Come on up.
Ms. Foreman would be your representative.
Or Miss, there's no one really listed, so Ms. Foreman, you want, I mean...
Well, I didn't call this meeting. I'm sorry. But, no, Ms. Gruet can address the question about the RFQ.
That was the majority of the, the main part why we put it on here was from the Audit Committee's recommendation about starting an RFQ. And so we, hopefully, I think that the Audit Committee talked about what that may look like and the timeline.
Right.
So that's the big part of it.
Right, right. And I will point out that they've been through it before. It was four and a half years ago, I guess. So the process is, Ms. Gruet led us through it. Back then, it was seamless. And she addressed the last Audit Committee meeting and kind of worked through a timeline and, you know, played around with it. And so she's got recommendations.
Right. So there's a decision point that the Board needs to make. So a couple of years ago, they passed the Auditor Selection Procedures, which is statute 218 dot 391. And that's used for your external auditors. But we can choose to use that same process for selecting the internal auditor. And the key difference between that versus just allowing the Audit Committee to do this is that, first of all, it's chaired by Ms. Foreman as the Auditor Selection Committee Chair, and it is done as an RFP instead of an RFQ. And the primary difference on that relates to pricing. You will score the pricing under an RFP. It won't be your predominantly weighted evaluation criteria, but it will be an evaluation criteria. Typically, when we do an RFQ, we go ahead and ask for pricing, but the RFQ is obviously more qualifications-based. So that would be a decision point that you, as a Board, would need to make, whether you want the Auditor Selection Committee to lead the process or to just have the Audit Committee lead the process. Does that make sense?
It does to me, I mean, go ahead.
So what you're, what you just spoke about, ma'am, was we might be looking at getting an internal auditor position? Is that...
No. No, I refer to, there's two auditing services that we do. External audit, which does your financial audit.
Right.
And then your internal auditing, which audits our policies and procedures and looks at what the state audited and re-audits that. You can either have an external firm provide your internal audit services, or you can have that department within the district provide those services, or you can do some kind of hybrid thereof.
Okay.
Okay? So what we're talking about is the internal auditing services.
The internal auditing services.
Yeah.
Do we have an internal auditing services?
Currently, it's CRI.
CRI. So we're using an external company 100% to do our internal auditing services? Okay. But if we were, but we might want to consider changing that? Is that what you're here to talk to us about?
I am, I will need to understand that for the scope of the RFP, whether you want to explore some kind of hybrid option.
Okay.
Okay?
And so there's RFPs, which are mostly priced, and the P stands for pricing, which means that's the primary qualification that we're looking at as a...
Just a slight clarification. P is proposal.
Proposal, okay.
And pricing is a component in, in the evaluation. It is not the primary component.
Okay. Whereas an RFQ would be request for qualifications.
Qualifications, correct.
And then qualifications would be the primary component that you're looking for?
Correct. Experience, qualifications of the staff.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
And so I think that, that, that's a good explanation of the RFQ, RFQ. So today, what I would imagine that we're trying to get at from the, from the, as you move forward, I know we kind of stopped you here in the middle of your...
Yeah, that's okay.
Of your, but what we're looking at is what is, from the Audit Committee, maybe do you, you all have a recommendation, RFP, RFQ? The last one we did, which one was it? And maybe you already said that.
Yeah. We did an RFQ the last time we selected an internal.
Gotcha.
Yep.
And then was there a recommendation from the Committee, like, do we continue to use that? Or do look at RFP? Or are you just presenting that to us as, like, those, these are your options?
Yeah. It's really a board decision.
Right.
To extend the Auditor Selection Committee's responsibilities to include the selection of internal auditing services. That's really your decision.
Gotcha.
Ms. Chu? The last time that we went out for an RFQ for the internal auditor, the Audit, Auditor Selection Committee did not exist. Okay? That was put in place by statute where we had to, and it was put in place in order to select the auditor for the, the, the financial, the annual audit. And so the Committee functions for that, but the Charter says that it can be expanded to include other services. The last time they attempted to hire a in-house internal auditor, that Committee did operate. And when I say operate, they interviewed, and then they came to the Board with a recommendation. And I would expect that, be it Audit Committee or Auditor Selection Committee, and we just need to give direction on which we prefer, that they will, they will review the, the applications, there'll be an interview, and then it, they'll come, that Committee will come back to the Board with a recommendation.
Yeah.
So I have one question, and it's probably an attorney question, and I'm just looking at the Auditor Selection Committee portion of the Charter that's in front of us. And I know that a member of the School Board will serve as the Chair, which has already been stated, thank you. But my question is, are they a voting member? I don't see it specified one way or another. And I'm only asking that because if they were to vote there, would they also vote when it comes before us? That's really a legal question, but I just want to make sure that before, if we decide to go down that route of using them for this, then I just want to make sure that we have that clearly defined, that yes, they vote there, no, they don't vote here, yes, they vote here, they don't vote there, they just serve as running the meeting. I just want to better understand that process.
Yeah. It's a good question. The, I don't see any, anything that would prohibit the School Board member from voting in either position. So they, they get to vote as a Committee member, and they, they don't have to refrain from voting as a, as a member of the Board either.
Okay, great. That's good. I just want to make sure we have clarity, and that's fine. Mrs. Foreman, since this is, you're the liaison, and you would be the one heading up this Auditor Selection Committee, do you have a preference whether we do it by Audit Committee or by the Auditor Selection Committee, since it sounds like it's our choice?
I don't care. I'm, I'm, I'm going to be there.
Right.
You know, no matter what. And I'm happy to do either way. I really, I, I don't have a preference.
Okay. Because I didn't know if, you know, I'm trying to think of, like, for myself, like, if I was chairing that and then voting there, how comfortable I would also feel then, bringing it before the Board, because it might put you in, I don't know. I just didn't know how you would feel about that. Like, if you're, if you're seeing the presentations and you're bringing it to us, you could, you could say, no, this is the Audit Committee, they are completely independent, this is their recommendation, versus, this is the Auditor Selections Committee, and yes, I'm one out of the however many votes. And I supported it as well. But, I mean, it's, I would imagine that if there's going to be unanimous support from whomever, although I don't think there was last time. I'm almost positive there wasn't.
Hmm. I don't know. But that's an excellent point, and I think the voting versus non-voting may be defined in the statute, because this, the, this Committee was formed because of the statute. It's not to say, on a Committee, Mr. Dye, am I correct in saying that I could abstain from the vote?
Yeah.
No? I would have to vote?
You always vote unless you have a conflict, conflict of interest, so...
Well, I would, and bringing it to the Board and voting it on it as a Board member...
Conflict's like a financial benefit.
All right. Okay.
Yeah, I think you have to vote. I think it's your duty to vote unless it says otherwise.
Could I ask a question? Today, on the Audit Committee, we have staff members that are, that go to the Audit Committee meetings. Are they voting members of that meeting?
No.
Okay. Okay. That answers my question, because the statute for Auditor Selection Committee purposefully excludes the CFO or staff from being voting members.
Yeah. They do participate and vote, I believe, on evaluations.
And...
Am I correct?
I, I think, I believe Tammy...
But their input is definitely taken into account.
So, under Auditor Selection Committee, they're advisory-only staff is. And I was under the impression that the last time we did this, we did have staff that voted when it was RFQ. But this has been a long time ago, I don't remember.
You know, I appreciate the point that you brought up, and because of that, I'm going to ask that it just be the Audit Committee.
That's my gut, too. When you were talking, that's kind of my thought, too, is that way boards out of it completely until it gets, comes back to us.
If it were, if for me, that's what I would want. That's what I was asking. It's really what, I was going to go with whichever way you're comfortable, but to me, if it were me, I, I would not want that.
Yeah.
I would want the Audit Committee to say this and then bring it to us, because then, I feel like then there's that independence. When it comes down to RFQ or RFP, I know that an RFQ was done in the past. I do kind of think, though, that when, that I, it's a pretty big price tag, so I kind of would prefer price be a consideration, personally. But do you, do, Mary, do you have a, I'm sorry, Mrs. Foreman, do you have an opinion on that one? Or does the Audit Committee have an opinion on that one?
I can't speak for the Audit Committee.
Well, I know, but you're the liaison, so...
All I do is liaise.
Right. Well, this, I'm asking you to liaise. Was there an opinion?
Yeah, was it ever discussed? I don't know.
No, it was never discussed.
Okay.
They do obviously pay attention to price, and because they use it to determine number of hours. So, Ms. Gruet, can the Audit Committee consider price? Can that be one of the criteria?
If we make it an RFP, yes, we can.
It would have to be a RFP.
It would be. And I wouldn't recommend making it your most heavily weighted criteria, but it could certainly be second or tertiary.
Okay. All right.
Yes, I would agree with that. I, I obviously don't want it to be the top thing. That's not, I mean, qualifications are still more important, but I do think that should be a consideration, just because it, that is such a big piece coming from our budget. I think it should, personally, I think that should be considered.
Yes.
So that's my feedback on those two things. I think those were the two things you needed feedback on.
I know that, and maybe not from, fully from the Audit Committee, there wasn't, like, a recommendation, of course. But, sorry, I just kind of got some feedback there from my mic.
Maybe you need to be closer.
So I don't, so, so I'm not saying this was a recommendation from the entire Committee, but I believe, is Mr. Blitsko that talked about possibly, at this stage, and we, I know we've looked at it before in the past, of having, in this, what Mr. Tatum asked, about having an internal portion, you know, done here, you know, that we hire someone to do here, and whether it be CRI or whoever's an external company we get, does some that we just can't do, or, you know, however that relationship works. Was that something that's been discussed from the Committee?
It was, it was discussed.
Okay.
And in fact, the last time we did the RFQ, we wrote it in such a way that we wanted the firm to consider how they would work with an internal, an internal audit staff. So we probably would replicate that kind of language again in, in the next RFP.
Okay. So then my question is, before you, before you, your comment, my question is, I wasn't on the Board when that was decided, I don't know if you were as, you were on the Audit Committee, I think. Where does that, where does that work? Like, how does that, is that, do we do the RFP first or RFQ first? Find the firm and then find someone, and then kind of they work, like, what's that process like?
Okay. We've had two attempts at having an in-house internal auditor working with CRI. CRI was instrumental in assisting them, divvying up the work, you know, just, it's, it's a, it's a relationship. So the decision to go out for an RFP has no bearing on, other than putting that in there so that whoever's making a proposal is aware that it could happen. You're right. Mr. Blitsko believes very strongly that we should have an internal, but I don't believe it has become a recommendation from the Audit Committee. And one of the reasons, actually, two reasons. One, it's hard to find these people, you know, it's, it's extremely difficult. And second is, I forgot my second. It, oh, it's difficult to implement, okay, and implement well. And I can't say that, in, we learned a lot from the first one, made some changes, and it took a lot of time on the part of Dr. Agruso, who was overseeing it, you know, working with the person. It just, it's really difficult to get it to work well. Someone had made the comment that if we do this, we probably should go all in and get, I know, I think it was Mark Smith from CRI, he was talking about the size, and we can't do it with just one person. You're going to have to be committed and form a, form a, form a body.
Department, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And...
Yeah, that, that was kind of my thought, too, of like, and I guess I've never, I didn't, I'd dive into it with Mr. Blitsko about it, but my concern with only having one is, you're still using, you're still using outside source and that relationship, and how does that work? And yeah, I mean, I feel like if you're going to do it, you might as well do it and hire a staff. I don't know what that number is, to do it, rather than one.
I, I was going to say, that was always the intention, to eventually grow it to something bigger, like, start with one and then hopefully grow it to something bigger, so that we didn't need an outside company. That was, that was always a goal. It just was so, I don't have a better word, I think I've described it before, clunky. Like, it's not, it's not easy just because of the nature of how this Board works, and even the nature of how that Board works. Like, it's just like a really clunky thing for them to, for that one person to work for all five of us and then, or work for that, I mean, they had to respond to that Audit Committee, and it just was just, it was a very difficult thing, and it needed more than just the skills of a CPA, because that, understanding the politics of the politics of that job is hard, because they are not just doing the auditing, they are now working with five politicians and a volunteer committee. There's a lot of other pieces that are in that that are not just a CPA job. And so finding the right person, I think, has been really hard, just because of that. And then it's really clunky. And we even created some sort of matrix, remember that? Like, there was a matrix where they had to, like, who they were, you know, who they direct reported to, and it's just, it's very difficult. I love the idea of it, and I do think at one point it could become a cost savings, perhaps, but not in the first few years of implementation. In the first few years of implementation, it will absolutely be more expensive, because you are going to have one person, then hopefully grow it to multiple people, and you're going to have an outside company, until you have enough people to sustain that department. And then maybe it becomes more cost-effective. You definitely will get more work done, I think, because you'll have the person all the time, but it is definitely a more expensive way to go, I think, at least in the startup for the first probably few years.
Why do, why does, one person from CRI, what's the gentleman's name who's recommending we have an internal auditor?
No, he's not recommending.
I heard some, I heard somebody mention...
We were talking about the size, you know, rather than hire, we, it was a conversation we had, he's not making a recommendation.
Okay.
And he, but he had, his insight was, one person isn't going to cut it.
Okay.
And, and then we talked, you know, talked about why, and, you know, but, but no, no one is making a recommendation. And we can, we can consider it another time, but this is not the time. We got to have CRI, we got to have a company, do I, do I sound biased? You know, I'm used to CRI. But we need to have an outside firm coming in, doing the internal services.
Well, we do have to discuss if we want it on the RFP, RFQ or not. If it's something that we will never probably do in the next, what, four years? How, how long does this RFP, what, the last one lasted for four years, I think?
Five.
Five? So if it's something, hey, within the next five years, we don't see us ever doing this, then we don't need to involve that in the RFP, RFQ, whichever we do, which sounds like we're RFP. But, but if we do say, hey, then maybe something laid, you know what I mean? I don't, I don't know. And will that maybe, will that even change a company's proposal? I don't even know if it really would.
Well, it might change their desire to put in a proposal.
Sure.
Go, hey...
Like, I don't want to work with somebody.
You're going to, you're going to be writing us out of this, you know, and, so their willingness to work with internal, internal auditors, you know, could, could impact scores, I don't know, so...
Ms. Brack?
Okay. I guess I'm the one that's going to look at it a different lens. Excuse me. This is to find somebody to do our internal accounts. Is, okay, explain to me what you're, we're renewing the Charter, is what you're doing here, right?
No, we're not...
That's what it says, Audit Committee Charter, and what their process is, and who's going to be on that composition of the Committee. This is, I'm going from my handout and what's out there, and what their purpose and mission is.
We haven't talked about the Charter, the Audit Committee Charter.
Okay.
We're talking about their recommendation and the timeline and the, what the process looks like for the RFP or RFQ.
Right.
Before, so we haven't even talked about the Charter.
And internal accounts is different from, it's only a small piece of what this...
An internal audit is.
Internal auditors do.
Right.
They, yeah, okay.
So the Audit Committee is going to do the research on who we use for this internal and make a recommendation to the Board as a whole, correct? That, right.
Well, Ms. Gruet, is, Purchasing is going to put out...
The bid.
Open it up for bid.
Right.
Invite certain firms. They have, they have a whole list from the state of Florida where they send out the information and say, we're, we're going out for an RFP, if you want to participate, do it. And they, she, they walk us, walk the Audit Committee through the dates, the deadlines, the process, the questions to ask. You know, it's kind of like when we were interviewing for superintendent, there were certain things we weren't supposed to ask, you know, but...
Right.
But anyway, so, so she, Purchasing guides them through it, and then they evaluate the written applications. And in the past, what they've done is they score those, and then based on that, they select the top two or three to come in and do a presentation. two or three to come in and do a presentation. And, um, and then they vote after that. That is their recommendation to the, um, to the board. And if it's not unanimous, they will tell us. Um, and we obviously have access to all of the, uh, their score sheets.
Okay, so it's gonna go out for bid and they're going to look at that and score it and then make the recommendation. I need to understand what this is, that this is a process. That we're going to go out and look for a corporation or a firm to look at internal accounts. This is separate.
Do an internal.
Or internal audit, right, I'm sorry. Internal audit, okay. And there are, how many members on the Audit Committee right now? I see.
I think we're down to four.
One, two, three, four. Four people. So we need to advocate for au- Audit Committee members as well.
Yeah, we'll get Mr. Hartman in next one.
Okay.
There it was.
All right, so this four-person team is going to look at recommendations for the internal auditor, for internal account auditor, right?
Internal auditor.
Okay, the internal auditor. Okay. And they're going to review everything that you provide, who applies, that kind of thing. Am I correct? I just wanna understand that process.
Let me just talk you through it.
Yeah, please.
So, um, I will capture feedback from you all today, as well as the Audit Committee on what that, um, RFP is gonna look like. And I need that finalized by the November Audit Committee meeting. And once that's finalized, I will post it electronically and it will go out to hundreds of potential firms, not only within the state of Florida, but throughout the country. And we'll get responses back. Roughly, we'll leave it posted for thirty calendar days. Responses will come back. Purchasing will evaluate that to be, see whether they're responsive or not. All responsive proposals will be packaged and sent to each evaluation committee member. They will review it, will convene a meeting, and we will go through the written responses and score that. We will take at least the top three to go forward to interviews. Then we'll have a secondary evaluation meeting based on an in-person interview with each firm. And they will rank it. We will bring that ranking back to the board with a recommendation to negotiate with the top-ranked firm. Should you, you as a board can dismiss that ranking and say, I don't wanna go with number one, I wanna go with number two. That's your decision. But the whole process, we're looking at starting it in November and we would look at um, having the first evaluation of the written in February. And then towards the end of February, we would do the interviews and come back in March um, to bring the recommendation forward for you to approve or not approve.
Okay.
So it does, it does take a little bit of time, but we've got the holidays in there, which is why, um, it's a bit more extended. Does that answer all your questions?
It does, so, 'cause we already have CRI as our firm that does our auditing. So this is gonna go up for bid to do auditing of our internal.
It's gonna be to replace them or not?
To replace or not, right.
Or themselves if they.
Or themselves, right, okay. I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding this, so, okay. So that committee is gonna do all of the pre-work, basically, and then come before us and do their recommendation on what they, okay, based on the information they, the applicant applied and they'll score it. Okay, now I understand what the process is. I wanna make sure I understand the process clearly, uh, before I make up my mind, I, I don't, I have to lean on you as well. You've been involved with the Audit Committee for a number of years.
So it's the beginning.
Right.
Um, yeah, no, uh, I think, um, Ms. Gruet just needs from us, uh, confirmation that yes, we want to go out for the RFP. And that it will be the Audit Committee and not the Auditor Selection Committee. And that's.
And the third thing is whether we want it written into the RFP, if we want to perhaps have our own staff
Eventually.
internal auditor or not.
Uh, it seems the consensus is to do an RFP.
Yeah, right.
Which means Price is gonna be involved in that.
Yes.
That seems like that's the consensus for sure.
Yeah.
So I would say the next step then is, do we want involved in that proposal that asks these companies to include potentially working with someone of, of the board, of an internal actual employee of the board?
Well, that's pretty nebulous, I think. It, it just, if we put it in there
I, however.
And they can charge an hourly rate, you know, you know, it's not like we wanna price from them to work with someone else.
No, 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 no. I was just, I was just saying that the, there could be maybe a potential in year two that we figure out we wanna hire somebody. And they just gotta know that they're able to work with that. I, my personal would say yes to keep that in there, especially if it's already been in, to keep it in, just if we ever were to go down that road. That, that, that way we're upfront with them, saying, hey, listen, we've tried it a couple of times in the past. We do have some committee members in the Audit Committee that do feel like we should do it. Um, so I would, my opinion would be to keep that part in the RFP.
For those, for those who have been, have, have some experience with this internal auditor, what are the benefits of having that? And the reason I ask that question is that generally, if you have somebody coming in to look at what you're doing, you like someone independent, unbiased from the outside coming in to do that. And so in theory, this internal auditor position, even though it would be an employer of the school board, they would be working very closely with the school staff and they all go out to lunch together and they're having, they get to know each other and then, then our internal auditor one day looks at something and says, oh gee, what, what's going on here with the school employees? And then they have to have that tough conversation, you know, about, I know we go out to lunch and I've been over to your house and our kids play on the same soccer team, but I think that your procedures for accounting for, uh, you know, supplies or whatever is not appropriate and maybe, you know what I mean? I just wonder about, like I said, in theory, typically, if you have someone who's coming in to check, like when the Air Force IG comes in, there's no local inspector, I mean, there's an Inspector General base that deals with complaints, but they have an Air Force IG office and it comes to a base and there's, it's an independent outside body that comes and does an inspection on what's going on and audits them. So I'm just wondering about the utility of having this internal auditor position, but maybe it, there are benefits to it. I just haven't been around long enough to see whether, what the pros and cons are. Anybody have any?
In the history that I've dealt with auditors, we never had an internal person. It was when the auditor came, they asked for specific record. I got that specific record for them to look at. It was handed to them, walk away. There was no internal influence from me at all. Um, I don't see the benefit of having an internal auditor because of that right there. I would rather have somebody coming in and looking at our stuff with an unbiased opinion. And I know we favor one company or has been stated. But to me, we should rotate people who come in and look at our, our stuff. Because on the auditor side, I'm sure Ms. Sellers can stand with me on this. You're looking at numbers, you're looking at the process and you're looking at, does that fall in line with your rules and procedures? If, yeah, there, there is a benefit of having, uh, that relationship, but I also see the benefit of rotating that out to get new people. So I'm, I like the idea of getting some different people involved in our accounts like that. So yeah, I'm like you. We need somebody on the outside looking in.
And the, the reason I brought that up is that if you put it in the, if you leave it out of the proposal, then that takes away that possibility of theory of having this internal auditor position and going down that road. It's just part of the discussion.
Well, to me, an internal auditor would be somebody that would be looking at, making sure that PO matches that invoice with that project codes and all of the line items. That would be what maybe if something happened, we have those, I know.
No, it's not what, it's not what they do.
I know, that's not what they do. That would be an audit issue, though. If it, something came back and it wasn't coded right or wasn't, the PO didn't match the invoice, that would be an audit issue. Internal, if there was an internal auditor here, it would only be the function of working with the auditors. And I don't think that we need that.
I guess we can, let, let me ask, 'cause I was only here for a couple of months before Mr. I forget who he was.
With a G.
Anybody know? No? I forget his name. Stu, it was Stewart, right? Stewart, yeah. So I was only here for a couple of months before he left. So I was never a part of like creating what his job description was, um, and how that worked. And that's, that's kind of, I think on Mr. Tatum's asking, it's like, I don't know, Ms. Messenger, what do you?
Well, I was just gonna try and say, like, some of the pros, as I understand it. Um, and then there are significant cons too, but some of the pros, as I understand it, would be, the person would be here the entire workday. So that means that essentially, instead of paying CRI per hour, when they might have lots of other accounts they're managing, you would have this one person here the entire day. Um, the other benefit, or at least perceived benefit, is that if they are in this building, that it allows the district to respond to any concerns in a very timely fashion. If they find something, hey, you're not adhering to whatever this policy is, your operation, whatever it is, whatever example you wanna say. They can go and work with that person because it's not a getcha, right? That's, that's not the purpose of this internal audit. Is to catch people doing something wrong or to find out this doesn't match that. The purpose is to make sure that we have the right business practices in place, that there are, um, checks and balances in place, um, that, that policies are being followed. Like, that, that's really the purpose. So the benefit of having somebody that responds directly to the board as our employees more time and better access for the district so they can improve their process in a more timely fashion. The negatives, of course, are that they could become too chummy, right? I haven't seen that yet. In fact, I've seen the exact opposite of that. Um, so that, but that could be, I could see that, right? But they have to be chummy enough to be able to work with that person, right? And we have that already. CRI has people that have become comfortable with staff to say, hey, well, I notice this isn't right. Here's some best practices. Here's how you can fix those things. Here's some, you. So that, that, that relationship will exist whether you hire an outside company or whether you hire a person. Like, that, that probably doesn't diminish either way. Um, but, but being too chummy is, I think, a big concern or con and, and the optics of it. I don't think the optics of something is a reason not to do anything personally, but, um, if the board doesn't have an interest in doing it, then I do not believe we should put it in the RFP because I think we will get different responses based on that. So if the board does not want to do that, which I don't, I can see the positives and negatives. I don't actually have an opinion one way or another. It could go either way on, with the board on this one. But if the board doesn't want to do it, then I don't think it should be in the RFP because then I think we're gonna get different responses. And I think that that could hinder some companies that, like as Mrs. Foreman has said, well, you're gonna cut me out. Well, if we ever did, it would take so many years, I think, to do it. It would not be within the timeframe of this RFP. But if there is a chance that this board might wanna entertain that at some point, then I think it should be included because I don't wanna be unfair to this company. They should know what they're getting into. So I don't, it sounds as if there's not consensus on that, though that's not a good thing, but, you know, if you found the right person, it could be great.
Yeah.
But finding the right person is really hard for that job.
We've tried it twice, Ms. Foreman, is that what you said? So.
And there's, there's a shortage of, um, of accountants now. Um, they're not going, going into it. In fact, there was an article in Wall Street Journal this last week about why people are not going into accounting.
And Ms. Messenger, did I hear you say that CRI does kind of have an advisory function, kind of an informal advisory function to say, hey, you might wanna look at this? The, the same function, like you said, where an internal auditor would be close to the team, the finance team, and can say, hey, you might check this out, this procedure anyway.
Well, anytime there's an audit, they're gonna have a meeting with management, right? Like, when, when we, even when, like, when we've had a state audit, I was in a, I was a chair and I was in the meeting when Ms. Sellers was sitting in that meeting, okay? So, I mean, anytime there is an audit, they meet with management and say, hey, these are things. And there might be things that they don't write up, that they say, hey, these are things that I think you could improve on. That, that's gonna happen with any internal auditor, whether it's the person we hire or whether it's an outside company.
Right.
And the two, one more thing, I just thought of it. To the point of, you know, you think we should switch people out, I, I'm not advocating for CRI. In fact, I voted against Shin and Company when they were hired, so I'm not advocating for them. But I am gonna say that they have switched out people that work with the school district. That there have been multiple different auditors that have been switched out over time. And so even though it's the same company, it has been different people and that's been a call from the Audit Committee to get that done. So we have a really great advocacy source with the Audit Committee when they recognize, no, no, we need a different person here. They have advocated for that and gotten that done. So I do agree with you, we should always have different eyes. And that has also been the argument for the external auditor, right? I mean, we switched out external auditors for the exact same thing, where we used to have MSL. And, um, right, MSL? And now it's, um, Cherry Beckett. So like, that was kind of the argument for that one too. So, um, it just recognize that changing the company, that's not necessarily gonna achieve everything you're asking for, if that's what your hope for is, because the company itself can do that. They have, CRI is a, a very large company that has lots of people and they have switched it out over the years on their own through the help of the Audit Committee, so.
So outside of the timeframe of the audit and the debriefing by CRI, they don't have any, do they have other interactions with our staff at all, or is it just kind of do the audit, provide the feedback or the outbrief? Whereas they don't have any ongoing relationship with our.
I think you'd have to ask.
Ms. Sellers could, could address that.
And, and the reason I ask that question is 'cause an internal auditor would have this ongoing relationship, whereas outside audit, an outside auditing firm maybe doesn't, but I don't know.
Well, so we happen to be having, um, two audits are going on at the same time because right now we do have the internal auditors, CRI, they're working on some of their particular items. They've already begun that surtax audit. Um, and at the same time, we have Cherry Beckett, who is just completing the internal accounts audit. Um, and they are, they are already well on their way on the annual financial report audit for this past fiscal year, June thirty, twenty twenty-three. So, um, but, um, it's a, it's kind of a long process. Lots of times, like the financial audits, you'll see them around for three months. They'll might start on some interim field work, maybe in the spring. Um, I know, uh, Cherry Beckett had started to try to do that for like the internal accounts. Uh, and, um, the internal auditor, CRI, theirs is a little bit more, uh, year-round, but at the same times, it it almost feels like to the finance staff and everybody else who's having to answer purchasing, construction, for whatever audit, it feels like it's year-round all the time because it does last a long time, because even after they've completed their field work, then there's follow-up work and then there's the review. So, I mean, it could take a span of a long time, so it's not like they're just around for a little bit and, and go away. All of this work does take a bit of time behind the scenes.
That's, that's a good answer. And so your previous position was, you were part of the office at the, in the depart, in the Department of Education that actually went out and did audits on school finances, is that?
No, um, the Auditor General's Office is a separate state agency, actually auditors for the legislatures. And they're the ones that are, that came in and they do a financial audit and an operational audit. Um, most of the time in tandem for the rotational, um, audits that this particular, uh, school board is required to have based on the, um, population. That's why the other, other two years that the Auditor General's Office doesn't come in. Essentially, Cherry Beckett is doing. come in, essentially Cherry Becker is doing the same thing, minus they're not doing an operational audit. At the same time, lots of little, small pieces of operational are kind of, of what the, um, audit committee is having, more or less, the internal auditor do.
And, but, so you worked for this?
I worked for the state, with the Auditor General's Office, and so they pretty much acted like, just like a C P A firm, but a state agency instead, doing an audit of the financial statements, including the federal audits for the, um, uniform, uh, for, for the federal audit, for those particular programs, at the same time, for the statewide audit.
And a lot of your work, though, is with school systems?
Educational entities, so, so the Auditor General's did it both school boards and colleges and universities, they also had the local governments.
But you personally worked with school boards?
Education.
Education.
Education audits.
I'm just trying to establish your credentials, so.
Yeah.
Because the next question I'm gonna ask you is then, what, what are your thoughts on this whole discussion, I mean, you are, in theory, an expert in this area, have seen it now from the side of Chief of Finance, as well as, you know, being the auditor, what do you think about these internal auditor positions, the pros, the cons, how have you seen it work, I mean, what's, what's your experience been?
A type of internal audit service, pretty much, one, is actually required by the state for a big agency like this anyways, whether internal or external, does have to get done, because you do need to have an outside, outside, um, entities, um, helping assist to look to see, um, uh, if the financial, the financials are accurately reported, in the instance, when they do operational audits, are the, um, compensating controls working, are they working in compliance with other state laws, that don't necessarily pop up, where it's ugly head in a financial audit, so there is a need to have audit services, for sure. Um, and a lot of the, so, those particular audits, when we had mentioned, um, I had mentioned in another time, when we did have, I believe it was the, a workshop related to the audit committee, there are certain statutes that do require to have auditing services done at this agency, one being the financial audit, um, and, um, the federal audits have to occur at the same time, and those are actually required annually, so, um, as far as, um, whether it be internal and external, the external ones are already required by the state, but, um, whether you do an internal audit department, or you have a, a service come in, that's definitely up the discretion of, of this board, um, so I would have the, I would have the opinion that you could have benefit either way, um, I do think that there is a lot that would be asked of, um, of any type of internal audit services you wanted, in or out, but I do know that if you had an internal audit department, that director would be answering to the board, that's something they have in state statute for a district of this size, so, and they're not supposed to be answering to the CFO, um, because the CFO is in charge of the financials, so that's a conflict of, of interest that way, so it, they would be responding to that, so if you had an internal audit department, basically, you know, how you have the audit committee that comes and reports to you, um, you would have the internal audit department reporting, and that director reporting to you.
So you don't particularly have any opinion either way, though, pros and cons, I mean, you haven't seen it in your experience, it sounds like a great idea, but in practice, it tends to go like this.
I have seen from a lot of the ones that I saw, in the area that I was assigned to, I saw a lot of, um, internal auditors, um, services purchased by the districts, um, there are some that do have some internal audit departments, uh, the one that I know of that's close enough to you guys is the, um, uh, here is Pineless, but that actual internal audit department does the internal accounts, which we hired Cherry Becker to do, and they're in charge of also inventory, and I believe they have some other stuff, too, so it's actually used as a different source, and from my, what I remember the last time, when I was supervising that particular audit, when it was operational, they actually, um, I believe they might have hired a firm to help them with even their comprehensive I T risk assessment, which is what this district had C R I do for us, so that's what I've seen, so, that helps?
Thank you for your comments.
So my question, since you're right there, and with someone having, with, if we hired our own internal auditor, uh, position, is my biggest concern with, on, the auditing pro, we have to audit, I mean, it's obviously mandated, but not only are we asking our staff to do their normal jobs, the purchasing and the financing, et cetera, but then now they've got to do this other part of it as well, which is, do, ask whatever the auditors need, et cetera, hey, you know, it's kind of like us, you're giving me it this way, but could you maybe give it this way, but, you know, so my concern is on our staff members, and the, and the amount of time that they are put through the audit process, so my, one of my questions is, if it was someone that we had hired, rather than having an, an outside service, you know, like a C R I, could that potentially reduce the time, because they're full-time and they're here, reduce the time on our own staff that has to go to auditing?
Well, that would be.
Does that make sense, does that make sense of what I'm, what I'm asking?
It depends what you're requiring of that, and what scope, just like you give a scope to an internal audit, what is the scope of what you want that internal audit department to do for you, that's, will dictate how much time you need to, where you would have to allocate, how much that would cost, uh, what, what items would you choose to end up having that particular group be, be responsible for? Like, um, right now, you, you would look at the cost of having, uh, the internal accounts audited, okay, so if that's something that you chose not to have done by a firm, but, but by, by your internal audit department, that would be one cost, so you would almost want to cost out, you know, if, um, maybe salary, and how many hours you thought that it would take a particular, um, staff to do certain things, and weigh it against what you've seen, uh, what an internal audit, um, uh, come, a firm would charge. So you would have to weigh, so the scope of what you want that internal audit department to do is gonna dictate your cost, and.
Right, well, just like it naturally does on our own, with what we're doing with, with whoever outside.
With, with the outside firm, too.
Right, and we could scale down that to, to do the bare bones, right, but, so my, so because as you look at it from a standpoint of, if we're gonna spend, you know, close to four thousand dollars for an outside source, how many staffers could we get to potentially get for that, that would make it easier for our, our current staff? I just feel like, and I'm not there, but I just, it's from an outside view, our staff is being worked, their normal stuff, and all the auditing stuff, too, repeat, 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 you know, here's the, here's the Auditor General, then it's C R I, and it's Cherry Beck, and so it's like, how can we possibly, could hiring someone internal like that, would it make it easier, even if it's the same amount of cost, if it costs less, or even, to be quite honest with you, if it even almost costs a little more, but the morale was better with everyone else, because they're getting it done quicker, or, or more time efficient, and I don't know, I'm just spitballing here, that's my question, and those, those are some of the questions that I ask, have it internal or not, so I don't know if you can answer that before we go to Ms. Foreman, but.
Okay, I would think, I would, uh, think that a cost analysis, to look to see what that would be, would probably, because when I think about, uh, listening to, um, people that I know who are on the other side, hiring, trying to hire accountants, and that's what your auditor essentially is using that same degree, um, you're looking at just a starting out accountant, that's eighty thousand probably salary, and then with benefits on top of it, and I'm not even quite sure that's gonna get them in the door, because they do look for exciting things that a company has to offer, that kind of thing, so I've been here now a little bit too long, I'm not quite sure, but, but, uh, but.
F R I.
At the same time, so, yeah, that's true, and that's, that's a big plus, um, so, and it depends, did you want to have three staff along with that, that director, so, um, so when you look at, um, I think what the cost for C R I is pretty much like four hundred thousand was the, or three ninety-nine or something, a thousand was what this, though, was at this point in time, it would depend upon if you had the three staff plus, uh, um, uh, a, um, director, you know, if you were to, you could still be looking close to the same ballpark in price, depends upon if you were to eventually curtail them to be customized, to be yours, but as, as a few of them had said, can you get them and get them stay, I know that we currently have a capital projects accountant position open, but I'm pretty sure that the, probably the salary's a little bit too low, which is probably why we've had absolutely no applicants in that particular position, so that's what concerns me, to try to fill an internal audit department, where are we gonna get them from? I have, um, family members are also CFOs of a few other, um, companies, and I know they're having a difficult time in their departments as well, even filling CFO positions, so it's, uh, it's, she's, um, Ms. Foreman is correct when she says it is hard right now to find the accountants to fill those positions, uh, so that's a hard question that you're asking about, that, you know, that kind of a thing.
Some people, numbers are boring, that's the reality, just some people, number, numbers are boring, not for me, not for you, I look at numbers all the time.
Um, just, I just want to address what you were talking about with, uh, the, 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 uh, parting staff, timing staff, yeah, um, keep in, uh, we do not, the audit committee does not have C R I go in and audit things that are already being audited elsewhere, and in fact, that came up this last year, that there was something in the risk assessment, I forget what the, what the item was, but where it was being audited by the state somewhere on something, and so they, they dropped that one. Um, there have also been times where they have something scheduled, and it's a conflict with staff being able to, uh, to manage that, and so they, they have, um, they have resched, re-scheduled it, um, so it's not like things get audited twice, it's not like they're the bullies coming in and, you know, going after it, and there are certain things in the district that have to be evaluated for the risk, remember them talking about the risk assessment?
Right.
And so it's, um, so it, it's base, it, it's a procedure that is gone through to evaluate where are the risks, how high of a risk is it, so that they're not, um, so that they're choosing wisely, you know, the areas, so it's, um, you, you, you make a very valid point about stressing out staff, but, uh, we would expect anybody who, uh, who takes the position of being, uh, our internal auditors are going to respect that and work with it, so.
So what are we trying to get to here, we're trying to get to whether we.
So, we know we want to do R F P, we just want to know, do we want to have, uh, this internal position, internal meaning us having a position for it inside this R F P or not?
My thought is no, but.
Which we have had in the past.
Our discussion's got me going, you know, no on it as well, um, sorry, Mr. Blitsko, that's not to say that we can't do it later, but to, to say upfront that we're going.
I, I think that, yeah, I mean, I, I think that, um, but we're getting close to a, a, I just feel like we're, we're an agency here between the growth, we're gonna see the employees, our budget, the amount, I just feel like eventually we're gonna work this way anyways, I'm not saying through the next five years, I don't know, but I just feel like we could potentially move this way, but I don't particularly have any plans, like, oh, we should be doing it now, or whatever, like, so I don't really care, I don't, I would say, if the majority of the board says no, I'm absolutely fine with that, if the majority of the board said yes, include it, I'd be fine with that, too, so we can certainly go back.
We can certainly go back and add that.
We can certainly go back and say, hey, listen, year three, say, we're, we decided to change this, I don't know, I mean, you know what I mean, three or four years from now, I don't even, I'm, I'm, who knows who was even up here?
Right.
So they could say, wait a minute, we're at the point where we need to do this, I don't know, and they had the, the right to do that, it just, you know, it was, it wasn't on their, the original R F P.
It's not our intention.
It's not our intention right now, yeah, to do it, so therefore, I would say not do it.
But I'm saying leave the option there, then.
We always have the option for the board.
Yeah, well, and I, I see what you're, I see both sides, but I also see there could be companies that don't want to do it, because they don't want to maybe deal with that later on, so, um.
Plus, we've already tried it twice, apparently.
Yeah, no, we did, yeah, I mean, they were hired, I mean, the one, second one, I, you know, he had some family stuff, but, um, yeah, I don't, I would say, if, if we really feel like it could potentially affect the bids we get in, because they don't want to work in that, I would say, no, let's not do it.
Sounds like you had an answer, is there any other direction you needed from us?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, is that all we had for that, that is all I had for that, I think it's, that, the charter was mentioned on here, um, my, my part was, that I needed, was the R F Q slash P, the timeline, that process, did anyone have something with the charter they wanted to discuss? Okay, I, the only thing I will ask, and, and just, this is just, well, this may open up a can of worms, I guess, but at what point, the charter doesn't mention it, but at what point is like four not, like?
Not enough.
Like you have, we have seven, right, we're trying to get to seven, at what point do we, as a board, potentially say, wait a minute, there's only three, or there's only two, if something were to happen, I'm not saying it's going to, but at what point do we say, wait a minute, what's going on, because I feel like, to be honest with you, and we're, we experienced this with the C F O C, too, right? C F O C's supposed to have fifteen, it's got like eight, or whatever, my, 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 my thought about it is that this community is very good when things need help in fixing, people will come out of the woodwork to help and fix, and I think that's what happened in, in during our crisis, um, our blunder, and now that, now that it's working, and it's been fixed, and we haven't had any issues in X amount of years, I feel like, I'm not saying that people don't still want to help, but they feel like there's no reason to help, and so I, I'm just throwing that out there for us to think about, I'm not saying we're making decisions or anything, when we can't make a true decision, but, and it's not only just the audit committee, it's the C F O C, too.
I would say.
So, so just, it's just a thought, like, that's just my initial thought, is like, you know, when is it, when is it saying three is too little, or whatever, and we've been begging for people, um, so I don't know, I just, that's just my thoughts.
Just because, you know, you've heard me talk a couple of times about, if we need professional services, we should hire them, and, you know, this might be an example of that, whereas we've kind of come to rely on now the C F, of the Audit Committee for certain functions, hey, you're gonna be our auditor screeners, you, you, you really are involved in the operational business of the school district, and all of a sudden, the volunteers are like, I don't want to do that anymore, now we don't have enough vol, you know, we're, we're relying on this group of volunteers to do something, and they're volunteers, and all they have to do is say, I don't want to do it anymore, and now we've, we've integrated them into this professional service, the professional services that we need, and then they're not available anymore, and no one wants to do it, and that's why I've always had this concern about these volunteer committees to do things that are really an operational part of the school system, like recommending and choosing an auditor for us, so I, I will bring that point up, that, uh, you're right, that this is an example of, when, when it gets down to two, are we gonna have one person recommending auditors for us, you know, and, uh, yeah, I will.
Well, we have, I mean, statute, we have to have an audit committee, obviously, do the recommendation, but, and, but no, but I, I don't, I, I'm not, I, I tend to, what you're saying, I tend to agree, because it's like, at what point, um, you know, when it was seven, and it's thr, you know, and, and there was major issues, and everyone's hustling and busting and helping and doing it, we're, and now it's kind of just a autopilot, because we've got a great firm that does a good job, and we're doing a good job with our processes, um.
The same with the.
Just a thought, same with the, I mean.
Well, well.
Real quick, I, one thing I noticed here about, just on this issue, while we're talking, I'm sorry, Ms. Rev, just wanted to finish up, is, it actually does say here, it says the Audit Committee will, uh, look at the sales tax and make sure it was used, it, it's, its use is, is correct, you know, if we, if we do need people to, to me, that's an audit, somebody spent some money, and you need to see if it was spent correctly or not, we should hire professional people to do that kind of service for us, right, that isn't, that is an audit, you know, um, but, but.
But that's cert tax, so that was written in the ballot?
It, it's legally required.
Yeah, but, but, I see, but, no, but I, too much, I mean.
Yeah, because then this happens.
C R I does the audit, the board.
Right, right, they actually, the function of, yeah.
The Audit Committee oversees C R I, and they make the, uh, they make, uh, they don't even, um, they don't even prepare the report, the report's prepared by C R I, but they are very involved in it, um, I think it's an interesting idea to hire people to be on the Audit Committee, pay them, um, I'm gonna turn in my invoice for the last, you know, eight years, um.
Not retroactive.
Well, but, um, uh, so that's, that's very interesting, and, um, it's an interesting thought, uh, we're not there yet, we do need more people, we could manufacture a crisis and probably generate a lot more interest, but I don't recommend that either, so, um, uh, yeah, yeah, so they, they don't pay any attention to us anymore either, so, um. uh, yeah, yeah, so they, they don't pay any attention to us anymore either, so, um. So I kind of, I kind of like the idea of considering down the road, paying for hiring people to serve on the audit committee.
If it's stat, it's statutorily required, is that correct?
The auditor selection committee.
Selection committee, you don't have to have an audit committee, but you have to have a selection committee to help you pick an external auditor.
Even that, yeah.
And the statute actually allows you to hire people if you don't have the expertise.
Okay.
Ms. Rev?
I'm going to point out the obvious here. First of all, we had a CFOP meeting last week, I would encourage all board members to go back and listen to that. Because there are concerns on that committee with what they're looking at, and how things are being spent, and I would encourage everyone to listen to that meeting. You probably won't need an article if they listen to that meeting. It'll probably create an article. Just the committee for the CF, for the, uh, audit, you have two members falling off of that in June of next year. You have one member till twenty five, uh, six, and one member till twenty five, so who knows if those members are going to come back or not, um. And it's, and on CFOP, there are, what, six meeting, four, five members? I can't remember. Um, one, two, three, four, five members on that, uh, to non-voting, um, so I don't, I think committees are just that, they're volunteer committees. Going down the road to pay people to do the work of the district is, um, when it's a volunteer role. If you wanted to create a position that was a part-time type thing, maybe, but I think that would put more strain on our finance department, uh, there might be things that they're looking at. I mean, if that would be the case, I would certainly lean towards hiring an internal auditor instead of paying people on a committee to look at what we're required to look at. So, yeah, I just wanted to point out that there's four members on the audit committee with two falling off next year. I don't know the intent of, of both of the ones that are going to fall off in June. I, maybe Ms. Foreman does, but I, I don't, um. I mean, who knew Mr. Grusso would leave, and she's gone, so.
You could do a part-time, I mean, I, I'm not maybe hiring a full-time, hey, we'll pay a thousand bucks a month to, you're required to have three meetings a month and do a report every quarter, and you get a thousand dollars a month or something like that. Another question I have is when you, you know, you look at the, maybe I'll go back and listen to the CFOP meeting, but what criteria do the people on the CFOP have, and what expertise do they have to start evaluating how the school system is, is spending money? For instance, well, I don't think it was, it says this amount should be spent on the arts. I don't think that payment to the school for whatever it was is, was for art. And so I, as a citizen, am going to raise my hand and say, that wasn't art. And the school system says, well, yes, it was art, because here's a statute, and this is what falls under art, and the citizen says, well, no, I don't think it's art, and then there's an argument on the CFOP, well, this is art, this isn't. You know, I, I just wonder, what is the professional, what are the professional qualifications and the criteria that they use to decide, was that spent on art, or was that spent on STEM, or is it just a judgment call? Is there some statute and criteria that they're using, or is just kind of a citizen's opinion on, on?
I'm going to, I'm going to say this, hold on one second.
Yep.
Because I agree, that's a big question.
Yeah.
And I, I'm just, I'm going to ask the term, I'm going to ask Mr. Di, that's not what was on the workshop to discuss, so we're kind of going off in, on a, but it needs to be.
Um. I'd rather you.
Not discuss that, okay, so, and, and I'll just say this, because I'm the one that kind of brought this, kind of, I said, oh, let's think about all this stuff. Um, and again, I, I, I bring up the, the, just the audit committee because, you know, and, and I'm, I'm not saying, um, I'm a hundred percent get rid of an audit committee, but I, my initial thought, my initial process when I was talking about this was if we're going to struggle to find people to help, is it, has it run its course? Has the audit committee run its course? Yes, we need an audit committee selection, the selection committee to pick an auditor, but has the audit committee run its source? If we're just struggling to find people and one comes off in June, and now we're down to three, and maybe convince that third, that other person to stay for another three years, that's all, that's all I'm, is my thought process. But we got other topics, and we, we've discussed what we need to discuss to get the RFP going, so I don't want to get into the CFOP. We do should, we should, and I think when we get to the middle, that's something we can definitely discuss in a future workshop. So, board's okay, I'm going to wrap this part of the, of the, the workshop up. Uh, we've got the direction for the RFP, which I'm excited about, um, and we'll look for good stuff there coming back.
Okay, next is self.
I'm going to move to, I'm going to move to, uh, item number two, district phone policy discussion. Um, I'm going to run to the, to the restroom. Does anyone else need to go to the restroom? You want me to do a five-minute recess, or am I okay just passing the gavel, and I'll go?
Five-minute recess.
You, we good? Everybody want, okay, let's do a five-minute recess, sorry. All right, welcome back. Mr. Schreier, floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman Cho, good afternoon, board members, good afternoon, Dr. Weisong. Thank you for having me here today. Um, on July twenty-fifth of, of this year, last summer, we had discussion about the code of conduct, and based on that discussion, there was a workshop scheduled for today. So with your permission, I'd like to proceed with that. Um, we have three key questions that we'll consider for cell phone usage. With the board's permission, I'd like to discuss each one individually before we move on to the next, get guidance from the board about the direction that you would like to go based on what I present with each one, and then move forward individually. We're going to have, we're going to see policy that exists in our school board, in our school board code of conduct, which we worked on last year. You're going to see a range of options in these policies moving forward that the board will decide which direction they want to go, and you'll see key considerations for each of the three individual questions. So, with your permission, I'd like to begin.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, starting this first slide is Florida statute one zero zero six point seven. That is the rulemaking authority that we use, uh, in our code of conduct discussions concerning, concerning electronic devices. Very simply, adopting the code of conduct that uses use of a wireless communications device includes the possibility of the imposition of disciplinary action by the school or criminal penalties if the device is used in a criminal act. A student may possess a wireless communications device while the student is on school property or in attendance at a school function. However, a student may not use a wireless communications device during instructional time except when expressly directed by a teacher solely for educational purposes. A teacher shall designate an area for wireless communications devices during instructional time. Each district school board shall adopt rules governing the use of a wireless communications device by a student while the student is on school property or in attendance at a school function. Here are three key questions to consider. Number one, when can cell phones be out or used by students? Can teachers or administrators confiscate and keep phones? What can students record with their cell phones? So, with the board's permission, we're going to focus on the first question. When can cell phones be out and used by students? This is our current policy that exists in our code of conduct today. If you are in possession of a non-district-issued electronic item at school, they may only be used before the morning bell rings and after school, unless your school has adopted a policy further allowing or restricting the use of personally-owned electronic devices. In all other instances, they are to be kept turned off and out of sight on school grounds unless an administrator or designee gives permission to use the device. Teachers may also allow you to utilize personal electronic devices for the completion of specific assignments as a component of your coursework. Absence such permission, teachers or other school staff may confiscate your electronic device per FS one zero zero six point zero seven. So let's look at a range, if, if you don't mind, of options for the board to consider. We, we're going from least restrictive to most restrictive from left to right. So, our least restrictive option would be students may use wireless communication devices freely throughout the day during non-instructional time. Middle of the road is basically where we're at right now, limitations on when students may use phones during non-instructional time. Teacher determines when cell phones may be used during class time. And then last, the most restrictive is where the use of wireless communication devices is prohibited throughout the school day. And I would tell you, um, that many counties to the northwest of us, uh, the Orange County area, that, that's a policy they have adopted. So I'm sure there'll be some discussion moving forward.
Which, which one would they adopt?
They adopted the most restrictive, yes. Up in Orange, and, uh, in Pensacola, and the Panhandle, several counties up there. So here's some key considerations. Of course, site-based manag, site-based management versus consistency between school sites, use of student devices for instructional purposes, and teacher, teacher autonomy and creativity, parental impact, of course, parents want to be able to contact their student throughout the day. Um, implement, implementation timeline for any changes to current policy. The districts that, that I just mentioned use anywhere from a quarter to a semester to re-educate uh, students and parents about what the new policy was going to be. And the administrative burden, including time and opportunity costs related to instructional quality. So, as we know, with our administrators, if they're following, keeping up with cell phone usage, that's less time for them to devote to instructional validity and instructional momentum. So that is definitely a consideration. So the key question for the board to discuss is, when can cell phones be used? And number two, is the board interested in this change for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year? Or can this change wait until twenty-four, twenty-five?
Um, thank you, can we go back real quick and show what we are currently, what's currently in the, that side that the most, least, in the middle ground, you said this is what we are currently doing?
What we are currently doing right now is.
In the middle of the road, right?
Yes, sir, we're middle of the road.
Limitations when students may use cell phones during non-instructional time.
Yes, sir.
And that's a per-school basis?
That's a per-school basis.
So Southeast may say, as you're walking around, before, uh, during lunch, but Bay Shore may say, only during lunch, never between classes.
Example, uh, in the hallways is often one, or not in the hallways, cafeteria is always a consideration, patio is a consideration between class, are the big three, yes, sir.
Um, we just opened it up, did you have your hand up? Oh, you can go ahead, or do you want to wait? I, I was about to start with Ms.
I'll start.
Messenger, and just kind of go around the dais, okay?
That's fine. I was going to say, I'm, I'm in supportive, middle of the road, um, and I say that because I think it should be up to the school principal, what works for their school, I think each school is different, the populations are different, how their culture is, works is different, and I do believe that that should be left up to the principal to be able to make that, um, decision. I think if we did the least restrictive, I don't think that would support the schools, and I think if we did the most restrictive, I don't think that would support the schools. I think the middle of the road is the one that is most supportive of our schools. If you make it the least restrictive, then it's all willy-nilly, and that would give the, the teachers and the principals probably no authority to say, well, no, I want you to put that thing away. And if you make it the most restrictive, which is none at all, then I think you're going to deal with a lot of angry and upset parents. Um, and also I think that could hinder education, because I think a lot of teachers do end up using those devices for different things, like, I mean, like, I, I know, like, I'm taking classes, and like, I go to a class, and they have different ways for you to respond and make. Like, I mean, like, I know, like, I'm taking classes and, like, I go to a class and they have different ways for you to respond and make a word cloud. And so you're typing in things and it's making a word cloud and everybody's able to participate in that way. And so I think the most restrictive is a mistake. And I think the least restrictive is a mistake. And I think the middle of the road makes the most sense. It allows the autonomy. It still allows the students to interact with their parents if the parents so feel like they need to. And I think if you didn't have that, I think there'd be a lot of really angry parents. So that's my...
Thank you.
As succinctly as possible.
Ms. Bray, do you have any thoughts?
Yes, I do. Not, okay, I know we all got the video of a child that was posted on the internet from a hallway. So that's the problem I have with cellphones in schools. If you give that little bit, the kids will take this much. And that's what, where I have the problem. I know some, if you leave it to the principals, some are more restrictive. Some are more lenient, depending on the population of their schools. However, I think our policies should be universal. I don't think they should change from school to school. Teacher determines when a cellphone may be used during class time, maybe. But who's gonna know what that student is doing during class time? Are they really doing what the teacher is instructing them to do or are they hiding the phone? I lean toward, I'm not to the most restrictive totally because there are medical needs for students that are diabetic and they have alerts on their phones. And their alert goes to their parent. Their parent is telling the child, have some juice, eat something, do something to get your blood sugar up. So I wouldn't go totally to the most restrictive. But if there was a column in between those two, that's where I would go. I just don't think that it should be, I don't think every school should have their own list of policies because we don't print one that says for Southeast Palmetto, Lakewood Ranch and Parrish. We print them for our whole student body.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's, I'm more on the middle of...
Thank you.
Ms. Foreman, I have a question for you. What about earbuds? Are they, is there any kind of a policy on...
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. That's electronic devices.
But I mean, can they have, I noticed at one of the high schools, they're allowed one.
That's the normal procedure. Yes, ma'am. Normal procedure is one. And then again, location of where they can have it in, again, hallway, cafeteria, class change depending.
But I thought that was really, that was good. That way they can hear.
Yes, ma'am.
Whether they want to or not. So, no, I'm of the opinion that where we are is fine, middle of the road. The teachers are in control of their classroom. And the principals are in control of their schools. And I, we don't inter, I don't think we should interfere with that. And as far as the code of conduct, it does specifically say unless, this is keep them turned off and out of sight on school grounds unless an administrator gives permission. So that would be the principle. So I'm fine. I think we're good.
Thank you.
I'm, in the current state where we're at, October 10th, I believe we should stay with what we have, which is middle of the road. I think number one, it can't be during, out during class time instruction. We know that. That's a state statute. So your teachers gotta control that, right? I think to change the code of conduct with something like this, this in the middle of the year, not in the middle of the year, we're first one, we're first one quarter. But without any kind of preparation from staff, administration, parents knowing, things like that, I think would be a mistake. That doesn't mean next year more restrictive could be thought about or whatever. Because I do see both sides. I do see let the principal decide on their campus. But I also don't want that to be an issue like, oh, well, you know, you get uproar parents at this school upset because another school allows them to have their phones out during lunch and whatever. But I think as of right now, today, we should, we're a quarter way in the school year. For us to change this would be, in my opinion, a mistake.
Thank you. We'll begin initial conversations about code of conduct in January. So that's when we start talking with principals, SAC committees, parents, community members about what type of changes they want to see implemented. So certainly we can revisit it.
Yeah. Ms. Tatum?
I have some experience with this. I substitute taught in a high school for a couple of years. And a lot of the lesson plans left me by the substitute would say, pull out your phone or your tablet and go to Google Classroom. And that was good. And then what would happen is after they were done with their lesson, which took 45 minutes in a 90-minute class. And I didn't know whether they were still doing their lesson, whether they were watching YouTube videos, they had their earbuds in. So then I kind of, you know, go along with some people who want to be more restrictive. But then I, I kind of thought through that a little more and I thought it really is up to the climate that the principal sets in the high school. You know, he or she is the one who sits down with his or her staff and says, we're gonna enforce these policies. And, you know, I don't want, I don't want to walk by your room and see half the kids sitting there on their phone, you know, 10 minutes before class is over. What that tells me is either you're not, you're not filling up their class time or you're just allowing them to listen to music or whatever. Once you start putting these really strict policies in, it's kind of like with the, with the address code. You know, all of a sudden you just have, well, there's exceptions and what does strict mean and how do you enforce them? And I don't know, I almost want to leave it up to the principals. It's the climate they set at your school. If you don't, if you don't set the right climate with the use of communications devices, wireless devices, your student achievement will probably suffer and that'll be on you. We've kind of set the policy. It talks about having an administrator make exceptions. Overall, I would say I'm kind of pretty happy with where we are. And I'll have some more things to say about confiscation. But as far as, question number one, it's not the ideal solution. It's probably the best balance of, of all the considerations that we're talking about here. It would be nice if we could just say no, but kind of like Ms. Messenger talked about a little earlier, we've gone beyond. Now, I know the Classical Academy, for instance, down in Sarasota, they don't, they don't use any kind of electronic devices at all. And those kids are doing pretty well. But it's probably the exception to the rule. We've gone past, you know, no electronic devices, no wireless communications devices. Now, how would you answer this though? If someone said, well, they do have wireless communication devices, they all have these Chromebooks and they can use that with the internet and that, and if you have to do some class activity, like Ms. Messenger said, you want to do a word cloud or something on the internet, how, how would you answer that?
I would be more concerned about their ability to contact and communicate with their parents and the parents' community likewise to communicate with them.
Okay. So you're saying that you, you want students to have that ability to communicate with their parents? Is that...
I, my personal opinion is absolutely yes. And I want parents to be able to communicate with their children. So many of our children live lives where they have so many activities after school where they're not home till very late in the evening. Likewise, many of our parents work two jobs, they're not home. So they oftentimes go days without seeing each other. So to limit that or mitigate that, I think is not healthy for our students nor our parents.
And the reality is that these wireless devices have become part of our lives and the way that we do business. And people will say, well, what did we do before we had cellphones? And that, well, there was, it's like the horse and buggy. Well, what did we do before cars? Well, we, we had horse and buggies and then the car came along and things were better. It's a new way of doing business. So yes, you're right. We, somehow we existed without cellphones. But now wireless communication devices are part of the way that society operates. And on par, it's probably, I mean, it's pretty cool. I've mentioned this before, you know, I used to do a lot of traveling for my job. I'd fly into some airport, let's say St. Louis, and I had to drive 75 miles to go to a little town to give a leadership presentation. I'd just pick up my cellphone and say, take me to Podunk, Missouri.
That's my hometown.
Is that in Podunk, Missouri? I don't mean to be, a nice, small, traditional American town with great values in Missouri. How about that? And I put, and I can, not only, I only have to type in it. I can do that while I'm driving. I just push a little bit. I talk to my phone. The point is, they're part of the way we do business. And you're right, this is how we communicate. Otherwise, you have to walk down to the office and say, you know, to the secretary, would you please call my mom because I can't go to work today? You're right, this is just how we operate. So I don't want to use the word unfortunately, but it is the way we do business. And to me, it's like the horse and buggy and the car. The car came along, horse and buggies were fine, but cars are better. Do more people die in car accidents? Yes, so that's a negative of having cars than probably we had in horse and buggy. So that's, there's a positive and a negative. But on par, having cars is better than having horse and buggies. And having these wireless devices on par is better than not having them. So that's my opinion on it.
Thank you.
I think there's a consensus of leaving this option one, your question number one, leaving it...
Okay, very good. Thank you. So with your permission, I'd like to move on to a discussion of confiscation. Thank you. This is currently what is in our code of conduct. As I said, we begin every January with initial conversations. So last January, we began working as a team. We have 25 members who work on our code of conduct, school administrators, teachers, community members. So it's a very diverse group. This is currently what this says. If this, if this rule is violated, administrator may ask you to surrender the device and will hold it until you or your parent comes to retrieve it. Refusal to surrender the device will be considered defiance and will result in appropriate administrative action. If the item is not picked up by July 1st following the end of the school year, the item will be deemed abandoned. Each school will determine what to do with abandoned items. Neither the school nor school staff members are responsible for any such items if they are lost, stolen, broken or damaged. I can move on and show you a range of options if you wish. So our least restrictive would be that teachers nor administrators confiscate any type of wireless communication devices. Middle of the road is temporary confiscation of student wireless communication devices, which basically would look like a teacher would confiscate during that teacher's period, during his or her period, hand it back to the student at the end of the period to go on throughout the day. And then our most restrictive is what we have currently. Administrators or teachers confiscate cellphones and require parent pickup.
Good. How about a policy that said we, I think in the middle of the road, unless you wanted to talk some more, should we let him talk some more?
I think you had more of his considerations.
This is just, this is just the key considerations. And many of them, many of these key considerations throughout this presentation will be the same. But again, site-based management versus consistency, policies affect on number of disciplinary infractions. This is, to me, very pertinent information. Last year, we had 1,400 days of suspensions due to defiance for not turning in cellphones. That's a, that's a significant, when you look at learning loss. And we're focusing on achievement here and, and you look at the amount of loss that is for children. It's, that's a significant number. Parental impact, again, with many, many of our parents in our Title I schools, particularly in all of our schools. If they have to pick up a phone, it can compromise their work. It compromised them economically because of gas. So it's more than just saying, hey, come pick up your child's phone. It can, it can be career altering for some of them in many cases. And again, there's a financial strain. Liability for teachers and school administrators, unfortunately, some of the worst, most serious situations I've been in have involved a school phone and a student not wanting to turn it in. So it can become very, very, very dangerous at times for, you know, staff members trying to take a phone. It certainly negatively impacts relationships between students and staff at times. And again, it's burdensome and it's time consuming. It's taken away from the instructional focus that we want our principals and APs to be as instructional leaders.
You want to go ahead and start?
Okay. So those are some interesting points you brought up at the end there about impact on teaching time and violence related to confiscation of cellphones. So what, what, let's say that a student just pulls it out in the middle of class and starts listening to a YouTube video. And the teacher says, please put your phone away. And the student says, nah, I'm really enjoying this YouTube video. If we don't have the ability to confiscate, I mean, what are you suggesting it that, like...
Great question. What I'm suggesting, that point, is that the teacher works with the student as best he or she possibly can. But it becomes defiance.
Right.
If, if you're not following a simple direction from a teacher at some point, normally after the third redirection, it is defiance. And I, to me, it would be handled like any other type of defiance where an administrator would be called, come to the classroom, remove the student, then a referral would be written.
Is that how we're doing it now though, or what?
Yes, that, yes, in cases where a student will not turn in a cellphone, they're asked redirected several times, administrator's involved. And at that point, it would come to, become defiance.
Did you say that we had 1,400 cellphone defiance incidents last year?
We had 1,400 days of suspension due to that very scenario where a...
Getting to that level of...
Right, where a student would not turn in the cellphone after being asked. It becomes defiance. It ultimately ends up in either ISS or OSS, in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension. But the tally was right at 1,400. I think it's 1,389.
So are you, are you kind of implying there though that that's not a good, that's not a good way of doing business? Or, because that's what I was asking you, if that's not a good way of doing business, then what's the alternative? The only alternative I see is you don't, you don't take cellphones. And then the kid just says, yeah, I'm really enjoying my YouTube video. I don't, if we, if we want to reduce the number of days of suspension, but we don't have the ability to confiscate phones, where, is there any middle ground there?
Well, the middle ground in my mind would be temporary confiscation where it's done class by class. And, and I would tell you just from, from being at the schools for so many years, that does exist. There's a lot of teachers who say, check them in as soon as, as soon as you walk in. That has inherent advantages and disadvantages as well. There's no, there's no one perfect way. But, you know, we want consistency and, and we, we want to be focused on student achievement. And we want to be focused on school safety.
So if you had to find a middle way then between, we never confiscate a phone, which doesn't seem reasonable, and we always confiscate phones, where would, where would you fall based on your experience? I mean, what would you like to be?
Based on my experience, I, I would not confiscate phones.
At all?
No, sir.
And if, and if a kid or a student just says, thank you, Mrs. Jones, for your, your advice. I really am enjoying my YouTube video. You just let him keep on listening to his YouTube video?
No, sir, not at all. You redirect him three times as a teacher. And then you would call administration. That student would then be removed from that situation. And then there would be a referral for defiance written.
Okay, so what you're saying is, when you're saying you would not have any confiscation, you would, what you're saying is, I would not have teachers confiscating phones. You would call in administrators to come and remove the student and the phone would go with the student?
The phone would go with the student, but the administrator still would not confiscate the phone.
Okay.
Because the reality of the situation is 99 times out of 100, if the child won't give it to the teacher, the child won't give it to the administrator, and then it actually just escalates the situation.
And that, and while we're on the topic of confiscation too, there was the liability for the school system. I mean, you know, I brought this up before about, you know, if, if, let's say a police officer, you know, pulls one of us over because we're a suspected drug dealer and they got the license plate wrong and there's a seven instead of an eight. And they pull us over and they go through our car and they take a bunch of our property and they take it down to the police station, cellphone, computer, I don't know what it is. And, and then later they go, gee, sorry, Mr. Tatum, you know, we got the license plate number wrong. Here's your broken cellphone. The computer, you know, how it folds over, it doesn't fold over anymore. It snapped. I'd be pretty upset with the police, like, you took my property and you get, don't you have some, as the government have a, you can't take it without, what would you call it, due process of law? Okay, well, you took it. Aren't you responsible to some degree to give it back to me like you found it? So that's another issue that gets avoided there too, is that if it gets broken, it drops, it breaks or something like that. I kind of, I'm thinking through this with you, kind of out loud, I like your, just don't take it and, and, and make it a defiance issue.
Right, you certainly, you don't ignore the behavior.
Right.
To the point. You're not gonna ignore the behavior. You're not gonna let the student sit there and continue being on YouTube. You are going to address it. You're gonna address it through the matrix, through our code of conduct. You're gonna address it by moving it into administration's hands. But the actual physical confiscation of a phone, I, I would not, I would not want to, want to do it in today's day and age.
Okay. I'm number one to go. That's kind of what I'm thinking right now out loud. Did you have something you wanted to add, Mr. Dye? Did I see you make them?
If you don't mind, it's related to what you're talking about.
Yes, please.
So George and I discussed this issue quite thoroughly and we, we both ended up agreeing... and we, we both ended up agreeing that there was no real benefit in confiscating the equipment. Because the, the discipline's the same.
Exactly.
And so the, the problem is removed from the class, and there's really no, no real benefit to the district, teacher, anybody of, of taking possession of the device. The student still receives the same discipline.
Absolutely, yes.
Either way, so it avoids-
The behavior's not ignored.
It avoids your concern of that problem you get into if you take the device.
Right.
So I just want to let you know, we discussed that, and we, we both came to that conclusion that non-confiscation is the, probably the best way to go.
Okay. Well, thank you for having that dialogue with me, kind of thinking out loud. I'm the first person to go, there's four other smart people up here who might have something to think about, but I, I've kind of, as a good position that, when taking everything into account, the pros and the cons. As long as we're not having kids in classrooms just sitting there on YouTube, and the teacher says, please stop, and there's no remedy for that, I mean, that, that can't be.
That will not be the outcome.
But it does, you know, like, have you seen in your career, like, little, it sounds like you're talking about fights, right, that actually go on between a, what, a prin, an assistant principal and a kid, and they're grabbing at the phone, and-
Oh, no, they just don't, I mean, obviously, they just don't give it to them.
They're, they're just not going to give it to you, and they're going to either walk off from you, escalate in the situation, because now they're walking off and posing it a safety concern. They leave campus, but it's going to escalate more often than it's not. They're not going to give them up, they're, it's their lifeline. Especially with, with progressive discipline, especially if they know it, they can't pick it up, or their parent has to wait to pick it up, they're, they're not going to hand it off to you.
Hmm, see, that's where experience comes in, so, okay, great. Those are my questions for now, thank you.
So just my thoughts as we're going around. I would probably say most, at least the ones who I would know, and what I know I did, the, the most restrictive confiscating and sending it down to the office and having them picked up. I mean, I, I would almost bet you that rarely happens. I could see teachers confiscating for that class period, right, after a couple of different warnings. My concern with no confiscation at all, and having to call the administration and someone to come, and now it's defiant, is potentially the amount of times that could potentially happen in a class period for seven periods, and let's say it's, it's high school, right? And do we even have the, the true capability of even doing that? I, I mean, if, if five teachers out of a hundred and twenty-five call, and there's four administrators, three, you know, I just don't even know if we have the physical capability to even go out and get all those calls, right?
Absolutely administrative burden, yes, sir.
So that's, so that's my number one concern. My second concern is, as a teacher, I'm teaching, and I've asked you to, a couple of times now, to put your phone away, you don't. The third time I ask you, you still don't. I've got to stop teaching at some point to call administration, email us, however we're going to communicate with administration. And then at that point, am I going back to teaching? Or are we waiting for administration to come and stopping time period? So, but at the same token, that kid, that, that student who would go that far to be defiant is not going to get you, give you the phone regardless, in my personal opinion. You know what I mean?
Absolutely correct.
So, and I don't think those, these things are going to happen every day, every class period. But I, I do get the, the liability standpoint of it. I get the, the, the teacher, the burden, and the opportu, the, the cost that we don't think about is the instructional time. If you, as a teacher, have to deal with this for five minutes every day, times one eighty, that's a lot of time that you're not now teaching. And I, I think, to me, too, it, it, this is relationships. Like, this is, this is, yes, you're, you're an authority in your classroom, but if the kids respect you, and they know that you're there, you care about them, you're, you're, you're there for the right reasons as a teacher, you want to see them successful, they're not going to point-blank typically defy you like that. And then that, that comes from experience. I was at the lower-level classes in high school, and so I got, you know, a lot of the students who a lot of truancy issues, a lot of disciplinary issues. But, so, so I would say, I lean more towards that, that middle-of-the-road, the least restrictive. I, I would rather take the burden off of teachers, administration, to always have to take that phone as you're walking from, to lunch, and you happen to cross a courtyard to get there, and now with administration, you've got to take that phone. That, to me, is definitely a burden, something I don't think we need to, to have on our, on our administrators and teachers. So I would, I would venture to more that middle-of-the-road, least restrictive. But I would, my hunch is, that middle-of-the-road, the temporary confiscation, or teachers are telling kids to put their phones away, is already happening.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
More so than not, more so than the most restrictive. So if you want to make a huge, big change on it, I, I don't think that's going to make a huge difference, but I, I would lean towards the middle-of-the-road and least restrictive.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Foreman?
Classroom discipline belongs to the teacher, and I don't think we need to be dictating that, and so I'm, leave it alone.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Ms. Frey?
Okay, again, I have several notes. One, expectation conversations. That comes to mind with anything I do, okay? If I have a conversation with my grandkids, this is what I expect from you, and have that conversation, and it's respected, then that's what you need to do as a teacher, principal, or administrator. You set those expectations through our board policies, okay? I mean, convertations, you said. Okay, students who, and teachers, students who disrespect authority, that exists out there, a lot more with the social media climate. You know, it's, I mean, we all got the video of the kid, I keep going back to that. It's in the hallway. How many kids did I see outviding this incident? How many times was that broadcasted on social media? You know, so maybe we should think, not this year, but next year, enhance the policy that, I know we're going to get into that part of the deck, too, I reviewed that. But student needs to have the expectation conversation with their teacher, but the teacher needs to have that with the student, that they're the one in authority here. The student needs to understand that they're in, when they disrupt with their phone by looking at videos or whatever, they're the one that's taking away their instructional time. Not the teacher for taking the cellphone away, it's themselves. They're cheating themselves. It's like, you know, you take out of your savings account and put in your checking to spend it all, but then your saving account suffers. So the student has ownership over the device. And if we have that expectation conversation with them, I mean, how many times have, I know of this year, a student that moved in didn't know the dress code. Came in with a little shirt and some pretty short shorts. Parents had to come bring her pants and a shirt because they did not know. They didn't read the student code of conduct. So I think cell phones is a deterrent in our schools, highly a deterrent in our schools. There's too much distractions. Where I am with this is, I know of one principal that does confiscate, but the parents know, because it was shared with the students that go to that school. My parents know, they come in and they start messing with their devices, there's, there, it's going to be taken away from them. And I saw on a cabinet, all these earbuds, we talked about earbuds, the kids were using. Yeah, okay, put the phone in your backpack, your pocket. But if you got the earbud and she saw it, they, they were taken. So I guess it's just a matter of, oh, you talked about fourteen hundred of students.
Fourteen hundred suspension days.
Suspensions out of fifty-five thousand, approximately.
Five thousand, yes, ma'am.
Right, students, okay. Those fourteen hundred students was defiant of our code. They're cheating themselves, and I can't stress that enough. If they're not listening to instruction, if a teacher tells them, take it out, fine, do whatever, like Mr. Tatum said, he taught, take it out, look at this, tell me what you see on your search, this search versus Google Bing, duck, duck, go, three different answers. That's fine, okay, now put your devices away, but some are not. I go back to the, you know, teacher has the authority, but the student needs to respect that authority, and there are many that do not. And that's, that's where I'm leaning toward on the code of conduct. Well, maybe your penalties aren't enough to where it's impacting this student and a parent to say, okay, we've tried, we're not going to have a fight with your child and take your, their phone away, because now you're disrupting twenty other students in that room. So it's unfair for those students, when you think about that. If they're doing something they shouldn't do, and a teacher has to go tell them, put it away, and they want to be defiant, then you've got to tell them away again. Now they're defiant, third time, go get administrator, think of the other twenty-some students. So I just don't think of that individual and their device. I think of that one device disrupting twenty-some other students in the room.
It certainly can, yes, ma'am.
So, and, and then the videos, how many times that can be shared, and the embarrassment. I, I know, we're getting to that, we're going to get to that, so that's the other side.
Are you for the most restrict, which one would you, the most least or middle ground on this one?
On this one in particular, I mean, we're almost to the same one, same category in all of them. I would probably be the most restrictive, just because it disrupts the other class.
I'm understood, thank you.
Classroom instruction.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Ms. Messner?
I think your point about how the discipline is the same, either way, is a really interesting point that I hadn't considered, but is really valid. In the sense that whether it's the rules to confiscate or not, they're either going to put it away and follow the instructions or not. And if they're not, then whether you confiscate it or not, it, that, that actually doesn't matter, because it's still, you're being defiant.
And losing momentum, you lose instructional momentum.
So I think that's a really interesting point, and because of that, I actually think I agree with Mr. Tatum, and I think what Mr. Choate was saying, and I'm not sure what Mary was saying. Sorry, Mrs. Foreman, I keep doing that today. I was a little confused about where she stood on this, but, because I think that's a valid point. My only concern was kind of what you said, was the administrative burden of that. But then, once again, I don't think this changes that either, because they're going to have to come and remove the child either way, what a pain in the neck that is. And I hear, I hear your point about, well, if you make the parents have to come down there, maybe they'll take it more seriously. I do understand that, I do get your point there, and that's a valid point as well. But in the, but then that's even more of a burden on principals and that, because now they've got to maintain the devices, they have to hold on to all the devices, then they have to schedule a pickup time with that parent, which might be whenever they're off at work at eight o'clock at night, or whatever it is.
They log them in, they put them in a locked place, be it a safe, be it a box, and then they have to communicate with the parent. And as you said, work around the parent's schedule to have somebody there to hand the phone back to the parent when they come in.
Right, so I, as much as I, I do see your point, and I think it's a really valid point, I don't think that, I think that's actually going to add more burden, and I don't think it's going to change any of the outcomes. And, and that's really what I think the focus is, like, the, it, it actually really doesn't matter, it sounds like, because no matter what, the outcome is the same, which is that they're going to get a referral, they could be suspended, you know, that's really unfortunate, and I hate for that to happen. But you either have the rule and you follow it, or you don't, and if the rule is, you can't have it out, then whether it's confiscated or not really doesn't matter, because you're being defiant, because it's, it's out. And so I don't, I'm, I actually am, I'm with you guys, and with your suggestion of, you know, it's, don't confiscate, because that puts more burden on the school, because they have to maintain it, they have to work it out, and just have it as defiance. And if, and if you feel like that needs to be a stricter punishment on that, then that's a different discussion for a different day. And, but for me, to me, it, I, I don't want to put more on the school, and making it so they have to hold it, I think, could, so. But I do agree with you, I think it probably happens a lot more like what you said, where like a teacher says, okay, I'm going to put it right here, you know the spot, put it right here in this, whatever spot. I'm sure there's a lot of that, that's how I probably would do it, too, I mean, I get it, you know?
I mean, I know fourteen hundred days of suspension is a lot, don't get me wrong on that. But you're also seeing a kid for fifty minutes a day, times five days a week, I mean, I'm going to say in high school. So you're seeing, so I just, and I would, I would love to see that stat, too, of, is it multiple offenders?
Yeah.
My assumption is yes.
Is, yes, sir.
If you typically do it once, you're going to do it every time, right? Not, you know, typically.
It's not fourteen hundred kids.
Right.
No, 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 it could be fifty kids that got it all.
But yes, sir, to your point, there's certainly multiple offenders.
But I do think it comes down to the classroom management, and that comes down to us as a district, training them and making sure classroom management is great. So I think you have your direction for that, yeah.
Yeah, expectation conversations. And good point, fourteen hundred, how many repeat offenders? You don't know that number, do you? I don't.
I don't know off the top of my head, but I know certainly there are repeat offenders.
Unfortunately, it's a sad stat in general. I mean, it's just a sad, I mean, it's, it's sad, but.
I'd like to ask one more question, just from, just for informational purposes. It's the current policy here, if this rule is violated, an administrator may ask you to surrender, to surrender the device, which really means that we, our policy is to, we can't require them to surrender it. Is that, is that our-
If we ask a student, if a student says, I'm not giving it to you, that's, that's, we don't take any further in there.
Right, so, so our essential policy, as it is, is that we don't confiscate phones if the student doesn't want to give it to us upon request.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, because when I think of confiscation, to me, that is, you take it without the approval of somebody. Like, if you confiscate something, it means I'm getting something from you, and I don't have your approval to take it. So essentially, we are doing the least restrictive. Would you agree with that, that our policy current, currently is?
Well, other than the fact that we, in many, many cases, are still taking phones, retaining the phones, because kids give them up.
Oh, most kids give them up, okay, all right, great. Well, I'm still with the least restrictive, I kind of thought that was a good conversation.
I think the confiscation, too, something else, and I know I'm pushed, I'm, we're trying to go to the next one, but something we don't think about either is, now all of a sudden, you take your child's phone, and there could be things open up from that point, that, things that are happening, that are now way out of scope, whatever it may be, right? And, and I'm not saying, no, I will say this. I know for a fact of administration that has looked through people's phones on purpose, to do, to find something. So there's another reason, to me, that, don't, just don't take it.
Hold on, that actually makes me think of something else, though, like, is that, now that you say that, is that a safety and security burden that we are? I have a question then. Sorry, that made me think of something, though. You did, that was your fault. Let's say that a student is suspected of making a threat via their phone, or text, or whatever. They threatened somebody else on campus, I mean, not like, hey, I'm watching a YouTube video, but I texted them, I'm going to hurt you, or, you know, or, I don't know, whatever, I'm sorry. I'm not very good at being threatening, I guess. I try, but what if that happened? What, if it's not, I mean, I don't, confiscating, once again, doesn't solve that problem, right? Because that already has happened. So what would be, how would you maintain the evidence of that if you do not confiscate a phone or take a phone?
Yes, ma'am, great question, that happens quite often in, in our district. So in a case of something like that, a school administrator could look through the phone only for what the, the student is suspected of doing. So it would only relate to that specific threat. You also remember that law enforcement would be involved at that time, too. So, so it goes over to law enforcement very quickly in those type things. But school officials are able to do it specific to that particular act.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not hindering some piece of safety and security either, because I don't, that's a really interesting, I hadn't really- Okay, I just want to make sure we're not hindering some piece of safety and security either, because I don't, that's a really interesting, I hadn't really considered that aspect of it, but that.
Great question, yes ma'am.
And if law enforcement is brought in because of a safety issue, I think that that takes it to another level.
That supersedes us, right, once they come in, then, then, right.
Instead of my Pythagorean theorem.
Then their authority supersedes our authority at that point.
So they could take, so the sheriff could take a cell phone, or even a guardian?
A deputy could, yes sir.
And, and confiscate it, meaning I'm taking it against your will, because if, like, that's a good, good point, you know, uh. We think there's a weapon in school, and you have, we think you have evidence on your phone that will tell us who it is. Uh, we need to get access to your phone, right, we don't have time to go to court and get a warrant, and all that kind of stuff, you know? So, so, but then that transfers from school administration to a law enforcement function.
Very quickly, yes sir.
And then it would be the, the sheriff or the guardian that would, can a guardian confiscate a phone, or just a sheriff?
We, we have our deputies do that.
Yeah, okay, good, okay, that's good, that's a good compromise there, okay, great.
Thank you.
Good, all right, your last one.
Okay, move forward. Okay, recording and posting media. This is, this is our current policy. A student may not electronically record any SD, MC employee or facility without written or explicit permission. This is not applied to school sanctioned events or activities that may warrant such recordings. Additionally, students may not post to the internet recordings of fighting, acts of bullying, assault or battery, whether staged or real. Regardless of time or location. During any district, state, or federal required assessment administration, if you are found with an electronic device that reproduces, transmit, calculates, or records. For example, cellphone camera calculator in your pocket, at your desk, or within your reach during testing, your test will be invalidated. Additionally, the device will be confiscated and you will be disciplined. If school officials have reasonable suspicion that electronic items contain evidence of a violation of the code of student conduct or criminal activity. They may conduct a search of the contents of the electronic item. That's what's in our code currently. Here's our range, least restrictive would be a student recording and posting media is permitted as they wish, middle of the road. There's clearly defined limits on recording and posting media. And then most restrictive, a student may not electronically record any SD, MC employee or facility without written or explicit permission. So I'd like to consider the key considerations here, please. A lot of it speaks to safety and privacy, as you can see. School safety being, you know, our highest, highest mission, that's what, that's our most important part of what we do, school safety. Posting can definitely, definitely compromise school safety, it has, it has, it's not that it can, it has, student privacy is compromised. Cyber safety in our district, our cyber safety policy is twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Policy effect on number of disciplinary infractions. Right now, for last year, we were at, right at ninety. Out of school suspension, nine-day school suspension for cyberbullying. Parental impact, of course, primarily on the safety of their child, and then again, the administrative burden. These investigations are very timely, I, I can tell you from firsthand experience. And again, we, we want our administrative staff focused on instruction and education of our students.
Uh, Ms. Messinger, you want to start this time?
Sure. Um, I, I don't think I'm going to be in the majority on this one, because we've already had this discussion, but. I'm in favor of the most restrictive for this one, and that's because I feel like it's a safety and security issue, and a student privacy issue if videos are posted. Um, and I think about my own children, and what if there was a fight, and they were in the background of the fight, or what if they were the victim of the fight? I would not want that posted on social media for them to have to live with, for however many years it's going to take for that to ever be. I mean, it's never going anywhere. So, uh, and that's what kids today have to deal with that any of us didn't have to deal with, is like, your entire life now is online, right? Like every, everything about you is online, you know what I mean, like, it's not. It's so radically different than how we, like, and I, and I, I'm only going to say this as a point, not to derail this conversation. But like, even our writing test this, this year is going to be graded by AI. That's creepy, like, that's like, like some computerized system is grading the writing tests. So like, everything about our kids is going to be in a computer system. I don't think the worst day of their educational career of being beaten up, or witnessing the fight, should then be put on social media. For other people to see, and to share, and to comment on, it's just wrong on so many levels. Um, and, and I also feel like that about educators, I, I mean, I, I know that talking about, you know, recording employees or facilities. The same thing with an educator, what if they're trying to break up a fight, and now they get hit, do you think they want that on social media? No, does their family, their children, everybody else want that on, no! So, um, I know there's something we can't do to stop all of that, but I think we should try to stop that. Because our students and our employees deserve that, not to mention the safety and security of our facilities being out there. Um, and yeah, okay, they can, you know, when we approve our plans, you know, they come before us, and we have the general layout. But to, to have a video of our hallways, and where the cameras are placed, and, and how the locks on the doors look, and, and the handles, and all those other things, like, we don't need that out there. And, um, so for me, it's a safety and security, but also a privacy issue, that I truly believe it should be the most restrictive one in this case, which is. They cannot post those videos, with the exception of, as what's written in our policy, of like, uh, an event, like, hey, they went to the winter concert out on the football field. Everybody can go to the football field, right, that's not, you know what I mean, or the, once again, I think of a concert in the, in their auditorium, or. Something like that, a meeting in the media center, that would be a, a public meeting, those types of events, that might be an expectation. But when I'm going to the bathroom at my school, that's not, and like, that's not an expect, like, that's like, so there just needs to be, to me, a public event? Or a widely attended event versus I'm in school, or there's a fight, or, and I know this even goes to what's out of school. I believe, as long, if it's out of school, but it's posted, and it has to do with students, am I correct, adults does that?
Yes ma'am, twenty-four.
I know that that one's kind of, um, hinky, right, because then it's not on our school property, and that's really hard to consider. But I do also recognize, once again, the privacy, the safety and security, and how does that affect the learning environment inside the school? So, um, I don't know what we can do for that section, if we really can enforce that. But at least for all the things that are on our campus and our school, I am not in favor of that, unless it's a widely attended public event.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I have a real quick question before I get to Ms. Spray. Because I think this, this encompasses several different layers. Sure, there's the, the videoing, period, like, well, no, like, but then, then it, then it, then it encompasses like. If you were to videotape something, and then later on be home in your own private home and post it. And then, then what, do we even talk about the repercussions on, now that you've posted that on a fight that happened at campus? And you did it from your home, are you now going to get in trouble because you recorded that from the campus? And then the, the other things are, if you record a fight that happened at GT Bray Park at five o'clock. But then we're, we're showing and distributing it on campus, and it was about kids, et cetera. So this, this to me is not just, um, the recording part, like, that's, no, you can't. To me, it's more of the, I think the discussion is, what happens if you do distribute this on your own personal time, whatever? That to me is the issue, because if there is a fight, and I record it, and then I come to you and I say, hey, I recorded it to show you. You see it, you delete it, it's not on my phone anymore, is that kid going to get in trouble? Probably not, I mean, let's be honest. But then we're going to say, well, wait a minute, you recorded it. So I think it's how, I, I don't know, it just, this, this one is convoluted to me in my personal opinion.
Those are great points you make, because every one of those instances happens in our school frequently.
Right, right.
But for the young person who recorded it, and then went to his friend and gave it to him. It's normally not going to cause any of the events you mentioned, so we would, we wouldn't even know about it.
Right.
It's for the event when someone, as often happens, records a fight. Post it, people make disparaging remarks, and then family members get involved, or, or there's round two, or friends get involved. That's, that's more of a realistic example of what happens with that. But every, those are great points, and it happens in each, each one of the instances you talked about.
I just want to clarify one thing, based on what you just said. I am, if a student records it for the intention of notifying administration, and that was their sole intention, I can get behind that. I just don't believe that's the sole intention ninety-nine point nine percent of the time.
And we encourage students, you know, we always want our students to let us know what's going on, you know, so they, so that we can intervene. Unfortunately, much like Ms. Messinger says, the majority of the time, the large majority, that's not what they're doing, unfortunately.
All right, Ms. Spray, sorry to interrupt.
That's all right. So because of the first bullet point that we all most decided that the immediate. Uh, policy would be the most conducive for our district. And then the second, uh, slide was the middle of the road, that's it. Limitations where students can use it during non-instructional time, leads us to this one. So if number one was more restrictive, we wouldn't have to worry about number two and three so much. I, on, it's a good valid point, when you think about it.
I don't disagree with you.
On your slide, you say, uh, doesn't, this does not apply to school sanctioned events or activities that may warrant such recordings. Then we have additionally, students may not post to the internet recordings of fight, fighting, acts of bullying, assault, whatever, all of those things. I, again, not this year, next year. I think this statement needs to be bold, take out the additionally and say, students, not additionally. Students may not post to the internet recordings of fighting, et cetera. So, um, again, number one and two is why we have to review this one about recording. And even at the beginning, Florida statute says that we are required to have policies in place for, um, electronic devices. I'm old school, if it were up to me, none of them would be allowed, but there are special needs that we need to consider. There's an adult with every student all the time. I've been to schools where there's been, when the bell would ring, and there are people in certain areas, that's their assigned areas to be, to watch the movement of students. There's never a time that a student isn't watched by an adult. However, when I see videos surface in a hallway, it makes me question, okay, what happened? How did that, how was that able to happen? So maybe we need to look at more stringent, um, disciplinary measures if a student does record. Not only the student recording, whoever posted the, the fight, or, uh, disagreement that they're having. Those students who are out with their phone recording it too, because it's not just the one person that was told to do the recording. It was several students doing it, so it's, to Ms. Messenger's point, it's everywhere. One student posted, and they have how many friends, two thousand friends, well, they're going to repost it, and it just goes out like crazy, so. I hate it that when I see pictures of students being attacked in a hallway, a bathroom, on campus, anywhere. It just makes my heart break for the student that's laying on the ground. Because I was one of those students, and I know what they feel, and it's humiliating. Because now you got to go to school with the, you know, throughout the rest of that day, and through the year, and through the whole fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade with that. Potentially, or move them, and again, another topic of discussion maybe we need to have, instead of moving a student out of the class, move the one that's the bully.
Yes ma'am.
So, yeah, I think that we need to look at the, uh, maybe the policy on what kind of, uh, disciplinary action we take. And anybody that does, uh, record some, uh, fighting or bullying cases, so.
So you're for what we're doing now, the most restrictive?
The most restrictive, I would even go farther if I could, but, yeah.
All right, Ms. Foreman?
I see it as two things, as Mr. Choate said, you've got the issue of recording, you've got the issue of posting. I have no problem with recording, including the fight that was in the hallway. The fact that somebody recorded it could have been helpful. It, um, um, we don't know what their motivation was, but if you tell students that they cannot record. Then you've got to enforce the disciplinary actions that come with recording. And, um, uh, I don't think that we want that student who does record it for. For a legitimate purpose, or an honest purpose, to be afraid to do that, okay, that's, that's the one thing. Number two, to me, absolutely no recording, I mean, that's, or posting. That is, when, when a student posts, to me, that is the infraction, that needs to be dealt with very seriously. And they need to know that, so, um, so I'm fine with them recording, just don't let them post.
Thank you.
That's my take on it.
Appreciate it.
I know of instances, it's happened that, um, to Ms. Spray's point, like, there's multiple people recording. I know of instances where, where administrators look at, look at the tape and say, there's a fight happening. Um, and there's twenty kids around, and there's seventeen of them had their phones out recording, and they get every single one of those seventeen kids. And now they're in trouble because they were recording.
Right, it's called endangerment.
Right, yeah, so, so that happens, there's no question, right? Um, so, but to, to Ms. Foreman's point, if they're recording, and then they went in, and they're out there recording, they went and turned it in. You know, at that point, I think that, that, um, to me, it's not so much the, it is, I agree, it's not so much the recording that's the issue. It's the, the disbursement thereafter. Um, and but, you're never going to have that disbursement if you don't allow them to record, right? And we're never going to have these issues right here if we don't allow cell phones in the, in the class, or in the school in general, right? Um, I still think, I go back to, this is what we've practiced for quite a bit, I mean, I would say, this has maybe been going on.
Yes sir.
Already, like, our, our conduct policy, I think it's really hard to all of a sudden, in beginning, in, right now, in October, to say, to change these, any.
I would absolutely, absolutely agree with you.
Any way, front or back, um, I would say, keep it the way it is. To be quite honest with you, I haven't heard of, uh, I've actually heard of more incidences probably that the recording helped. Than, hey, it was on Instagram, it was on whatever, um. So, so I would say, keep it, keep it what we have, again, to then readdress and look at this, like, we've already talked about some of the things, so.
So I look at this as two separate issues, number one is, and it's kind of like Mrs. Foreman said, taking the video and then publishing it, especially off campus, so. I'm, I'm, I kind of favor the most restrictive policy, which is kind of what we already have, right, is that what we already have? Except that, I mean, you know, police body cams have been very useful in finding out, quote unquote, the truth. But, okay, but again, you have to weigh pros and cons in these situations, where are the pros and the cons? Probably generally not videotaping on campus is probably a better policy, and we have so many cameras around anyway, in all our hallways and stuff. Hopefully, we'll get some video of, of bad things that happen. Now, the second part is the posting, you know, this is one of those things where it would be nice to be able to regulate people's behavior. Uh, because we don't like what they're doing, the general societal value is it's something bad to do, but I just don't see how we can, and, let me ask you this. If kids get in a fight off campus, do we punish them for that?
We can, it depends on the situation, circumstance.
Like such a, can you give me a, they get in a fight at GT Bray, or I don't know, they beat each other up?
Well, it depends on how close they are to the school, it depends on the time, how close to dismissal school. What I've found, most of the fights that happen in the community, especially those right after school, actually started in the school. There's also a consideration of what type of. There's also a consideration of what type of actions take place at the school after the fight. Does it put the school in a dangerous situation? Does it pose a risk to the safety and security of other students? There's just an array of mitigating factors, but we, we are able to if, if those factors are in line.
So if kid, I guess what I'm getting at is that what, what they do after they leave the campus, I mean, I can see, if we make the policy that you shouldn't have taken the video, and we punish them for that, that's fine. I would just strike the whole, where it starts additionally, students may not post to the internet. I mean, we'd, it'd be nice if they didn't do that, it's probably not, but I just don't know how we go about enforcing that. You can be punished, you're on school property, you violated a policy. But unless there's some law that says, you know, like a legal statute in the state of Florida or something that says that they can't post it to the internet, I don't know how we go about. I mean, you can roll on this, Mr. Die is a lawyer, but just from general constitutional principles, if I've got a video on my phone and there's nothing illegal about that video, I'm not posting child porn or something like that. What, if I'm sitting in my, in my room, and I just, off, in my private property, I wanna post a video to the internet that's not an illegal type of video. I don't know how it is that we punish people for doing that.
I think, I think it's the content. So you're posting a video of two kids fighting in the hallways that you should have never, that, that to me is the issue. You're not posting a picture of how great the landscape looks because the janitor did a really good job, and that was on school campus. It's about the fight and what you're actually posting is, is the way I would look at it. But, I mean, Mr. Die could definitely weigh in from a legal standpoint.
I think it's gotta have some detrimental effect on the school. It's really what, I think it's more the content of what gets posted. If it, and it'd be, or it would be the burden of the district to, if it was challenged, to say that, yes, this has a detrimental effect on the orderly operation of the school district.
Right, and it's most often disparaging remarks about one or both parties, whether they're bullying or harassing, or poking fun at the students. That's one perspective, and then also oftentimes, the very post that they put causes a second act of violence the next day, and, you know, for attribution. So there, there's two different, different areas where that, where it can have a negative impact on students.
I'm not gonna follow my sword, and I just think if it happens off campus, off campus and off our property, if they're not doing something illegal, it's not illegal to post a video to the internet. It's, it's a violation of school policy to take that video, if that's what we decide, but it's not a violation of a law, statute, and if they're off, if they're on their own private time, they wanna post, we can, we can discipline them for, hey, our policy was, but they didn't break any law. And so when we start going out and policing people's behavior, and not necessarily legal behavior, I mean, just, we don't think, you should be doing this off campus. Like, if you got smoking off campus, would we, would we discipline kids if they were caught smoking, uh, smoking marijuana in a park or something? I don't know, that's a, that's a legal thing between the sheriff and the law of, you know, the state of Florida, but we don't, do we discipline kids for?
It certainly could affect their participation in extracurriculars per, per the code of conduct. But again, every case is individual, but there are, there are situations where it would affect some of their participation.
Yeah, it's just, again, policing people's behavior off campus, it's not necessarily legal. I just don't think the government should be in that business. There's nothing illegal about uploading a video to the internet, as long as I said, it's not an illegal video, child porn, pornography, something like that. But it's not a follow my sword issue, and to bring this to a close, we'll, I'm, I'm for the most restrictive policy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have one thing, though. Just one language change, and I'm not advocating to changes now, but for the next one. It says, "Post to the internet." And I just, I know I've visited schools before where principals have told me that they, all these kids are on Apple phones, I'm not an Apple person, but they all open up their AirDrop, and the video gets shared that way throughout the school.
That happens as well.
Well, that's not posting on the internet. That is sharing in a different manner. So I just think the language might need to be tweaked to also say, "Post" or "Share."
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's.
Distribute.
Distributed, however.
Because that's becoming more prevalent. It's kind of a new thing, but it's starting to pick up speed.
Yeah, I don't know how to do that. I just know that people do it.
Well, even like, you know, your Snapchat, you send it out in Snapchat, after thirty, it's gone, unless you have screen recorded it, so that's still dispersment, right? You're still dispersing that.
I don't do Snapchat either, so I don't know any of these.
I don't do.
I just know because.
Ask your kids.
Yeah.
They're five and eight, they better not do it either.
They don't know. All right, thank you very much.
Any further questions?
I don't think so.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for your presentation.
Um, yeah, it was very good, I thought it was very, the way you walked us through it, I thought it was good. That was very good. Hopefully, we gave you the direction you need. Um, next up is the Parent-Employ Center. Mr. Tatum, I know this was one of your items that you wanted to discuss, and think about an idea, maybe creating one, so, pour your.
So just to bring it back, we had talked about this in bringing it up in a workshop. I'll just tell you a story that kind of, sometimes, you know, a picture, a story maybe is worth a thousand words. I don't have to say a thousand words. So, a couple of weeks ago, I got a phone call, actually, from a parent who had, who had, the child had moved out of the district to another school system, I think it was even out of state, and the parent needed the, the records transferred to that other school. Academic records get transferred. And as the story was explained to me, and maybe Dr. Weisong can, knows a little more about it, but two weeks, two weeks after the parent had made the request, the records had not yet been transferred. That seems like an excessive amount of time. So, first of all, for, for parents that are watching and stuff, you can always call me. My number and my email are out there on the internet, any issues that you have, but it would have been, and then I had to have, I ended up calling Dr. Weisong, or I think I sent him an email, and then he, it works his way back down through the chain, and it goes, I think, to the principal, and there was, the principal might have even contacted the parent. And my idea is to avoid a lot of that administrative burden, that if I just had, if we had this Parent-Employ, Employee Engagement Center, a lot of those things could, I could take that call, and I would, you know, or I'd say, "Look, write me an email, I'll send it to the Employment Engagement Center, it'll be logged in as case number 5271, it's assigned to Mrs. Jones, and Mrs. Jones is gonna, is gonna work it. And Mrs. Jones will get back with you in, in twenty-four hours." And I, and I call it employee too, because people have contacted me about my healthcare benefits, for whatever reason or not, being processed correctly, or I don't think I'm getting the pay, whatever those things are, you know, this, this idea is to take some of this administrative burden off of us, and, and put it to people who can actually focus on it, instead of, I envision Dr. Weisong sitting there, and maybe it's not the truth of the matter, but he does his, he works hard all day, running the district, big picture stuff, and then, then he starts going through his email from the lady who didn't get her, you know, students' records. Not that those things aren't important, but it shouldn't rise to our level unless it's, it has to rise to our level. And again, the model behind this is, where I came up with this idea, is in military hospitals, sometimes when the patient feels like the, the administrative staff in the hospital is not responding in a timely manner, they have this office called the Patient Advocate Office. And, and you call the Patient Advocate Office, and you say, "Look, I just don't feel like the service of the hospital is getting me what I need." And then that patient starts working, or that advocate starts working for the, the patient, or in our case, the employee or the parent, to get them what they need, and they, they have the ability to intervene in the bureaucracy, instead of, A, the parent trying to work the bureaucracy outside of it, which is difficult to do, or B, us having to send it to the superintendent, all these things, and then, you know, have his whole staff spend a bunch of their time working on that stuff. So, you know, I've talked to Dr. Weisong about this, he has some ideas that we could have an employee, Employment Engagement, Employee-Parent Engagement Center. There could be a different way of structuring this, it's not an official center. But just to start this conversation of how do we take some of this administrative burden off the, the senior leaders, and, and have an office that's really focused on customer service for parents and employees. One thing I did wanna explore too, is somehow, hopefully, Mr. Chapman will get the opportunity to talk. We did this in the past, did we not? Did we not have an Employment-Employ Engagement Center, or something like that? It might be interesting to hear from you, i- if Dr. Weisong would, wants you to speak about this. It worked, it didn't work, why did we not, you know? Again, it's one of those good ideas in my head, but then, you know, when it starts to play out in real life, it doesn't turn out, so.
Well, we did, unfortunately, it was before my time, and probably before everybody's time here. It was called the PIC. It was actually across, down the, it was down the street.
It was right next door.
Yeah, yeah, it was the, whatever it was, Parent Information Center, PIC. But that's, so I don't know quite the details, we'd have to go back into the, find some of those twenty-five or thirty-year employees who, who would know, but.
I know who it was. I know who ran it.
Oh, there you go, there you go.
I've heard of it too, so.
But, um, yeah, for you all to discuss, I mean, you also did approve a, a new executive director who has family engagement now in their title, so I know as, as a team, the superintendent is directing, you know, that new person and cabinet to, to, you know, come up with a, a plan, and a, you know, kind of had a, off of your conversations of, of this kind of, how to create a new, whatever we call it. And, and so I know we're working on that, as, as a team, with our new executive director who has that title.
Some type of office that's specifically focused on customer service and advocating, where the parent feels like they're heard, and they know there's someone inside the system that's advocating for them, and that really does have the ability to touch, is knowledgeable about the bureaucracy, and has the relationships in the bureaucracy, to go out and touch people in the bureaucracy to get things done, rather than me having to call the superintendent or write him an email about academic records, that, that kinda stuff should, even late buses and stuff like that should just never rise. It's not that we're some elite people, it's just that it shouldn't rise to us unless it has to rise to us. And a lot of that stuff seems to come to us immediately.
Well, and it could be, it could be, so there's a lot of, uh, employees doing what you're doing, what you, what you said is, needs to be done. But there, there are school districts in, well, around the country that have, you know, like a flow chart on their website, for example. You know, for example, we do have a parent advocate on the ESE side. And then she handles, I think she's handled almost seventy cases already this year, of helping parents navigate the ESE world. We have people dedicated in the ESOL department who handle, who answer our Spanish hotline, we call it, a phone number where Spanish-speaking families and employees can call and get resources and, and ask questions, and that person answers that call and keeps data on that. We obviously have a team under Joe Rinaldi's leadership at Transportation that handles, you know, calls in, for, for those, you know, those are probably the, the three areas of the most need. ESE, transportation, and, and our, and our families who don't speak English, so. But you're right, you know, perhaps, you know, a, a place, now that, now that we have an executive director under family engagement, that there's a way where a, a parent can go either to our website or somewhere and see, here, here's a place where I can find help, all in one area. So the ESE, transportation, you know, so on and so forth, you know, that's, those are the kinda ideas that we've been kind of trying to put together, is, is, you know, whether it's enrollment with OSA, or, you know, having a, a flow chart of where to go, and also, like you just said, if I need a student record, who do I call? If I need, if I have an issue with a bus, who do I call? I need to enroll my child, who do I call? And maybe there's a, something we put together that, e- e- either it's a physical location, or it's a, a team of people who may be in different locations, but they're working as a team under that family engagement, are things that I think we're, as a team, trying to work on.
Yeah, I think, I think it's communication. I think the number one thing in all of that, and with your idea, is communication. And here's the issue, I, I don't, if we have a physical spot, we have ten people dedicated to this, we're still gonna get the emails. It's all about, do the parents know who to email? That's why they email us, because they go on the school board, and they see my ugly mug, or anybody else, and say, "Wait a minute, oh, I'm emailing the school board, I'm not getting answered for my principal in time," or whatever. Or they didn't even talk to the administration on, on. I think what we need to, to, to help with, with having it go to the right places that don't even get to us, because I agree, what are we gonna do? We're just gonna tell everybody else, and it works its way back down. What I think that we need to do, and this, and we can call it, however we wanna call it, but it's the communication to the parents, to the staff, however you wanna, on your website, whatever, but here's how you go about the first level, the second level. Not, because it comes to us, we just send it right back down to the first level. And so, I don't know if we need more people to do that job. I don't know, that's not, I don't, I don't know if we have enough people in the organization that are doing that. Maybe you hire a couple extra, whatever, I don't know. But I don't, I think it's about communicating to parents that we aren't the right ones to answer that call about, you're not, we're not getting our transcripts in time. All we're gonna do is then go back and, through several layers, go back to the principal at Maiti High School and say, "Mr. Cho hasn't received his son's," so, so. And if they feel like that, that they're not getting heard from that level, then who's the next level to go to? That's what we need to, now it's their supervisor, and it's the supervisor, the principals, it's Mr. Clark. That's, I think we need to put together a flow chart of, and communicate that to parents. I don't know if we need to build a whole new section, and maybe, and what I mean by that is, I'm not saying you're advocating for building or whatever, but some kind of, on the, on the website, something easy, something to send out to people, email through our newsletters, whatever, of, if you do have a problem, here's a faster way to get it resolved, is going through these steps. I think it's about communication, not, not, because I don't wanna take, I don't wanna take the communication out of the, the, uh, school's hands. If I'm the principal, I wanna get a chance to deal with this situation before it jumps to us as a board. You know, and, and that's, I think, is the key.
Yeah, the one, the one, the, the one good thing that happened about, or an example, if, you know, if you're doing a white paper on the COVID epidemic, what really helped us through that was a decision tree. And, and it was very clear about, now sometimes it looked confusing, but, but you knew as a parent and employee what to do, whether you had COVID, you needed to get tested for COVID, how many days, and it was a decision tree. So essentially, it's building a decision tree to say, you know, here's your first, here's the first thing to do, which nine times out of ten will be, call your school, because your school administration will be taking care of ninety percent of the, of, of the issue. And then from there, if that's not resolved, where, where, where do I go next? So do I go to, you know, the principal supervisor, an ED, or do I go to the ESE department? You know, here's the contact for that, transportation, here's the contact for that. You know, nursing, here's the contact, you know, and lay out that tree on a one-page document, and have that, obviously, to every parent, every employee, on our website, I, I think would be a great use. And then from there, you know, see, see where we go with that. At least build that, because I think that would be a great first step, which is something we could do very easily.
Was it resolved? No. Next.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If I could respond real quick, before Ms. Foreman talks, to what you said. Number one is, we're, we're gonna get the emails, but instead of having to send it to Laura or Dr. Weisong, I could send that email directly to this, if it's not a physical building, at least people that have this Employee-Parent Engagement. Instead of having it wind its way back down through the bureaucracy, like you said. Number two is, I'm, I'm concerned about if we just have POCs in each area, transportation, nursing, whatever, that, they're still part of the bureaucracy, right? They're not, they're not the advocate, you know? If you call the nursing, the, the nurse office, and you say, "I'm, I'm concerned about my child's services that they're getting from the nursing office at elementary school X," that nurse is still part of the bureaucracy. The idea of having these advocates are, I'm outside of all that. I'm, I'm like your, I'm like your, your defense attorney when you get accused of a crime, you know? I'm someone who's actually on your side, I'm not part of the bureaucracy, I'm not in those silos, I'm outside of it, and to work this problem for you inside the bureaucracy. Where if we just set, we just put a bunch of POC numbers on a website, call this for nursing, call this for academic records, call this for transportation, then there's still no advocate, they're still working, and you call those numbers, and you leave a message, and someone never gets back to you, and.
Those advocates are still gonna have to go back to the school.
Well, we would make sure, I mean, mo- most of the people that I spoke about are doing the advocacy, they just don't have that title, if you will. You know, if you call Linda Agresta at Transportation, she's gonna be advocating for that parent. If you call Jody Amer on ESE, she's gonna be advocating to get that answer. If you call Jenny Rodriguez in ESOL, she's gonna solve that problem for you. So, it would be the right people making sure, to your point, that, that this isn't, you're not gonna be passed around anymore. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're getting you an answer. Now, you may not like the answer, but it's, it's the answer, and here, here it is. And, and it's, and it's managed in a way where the data is kept, so that if you came, came to us and said, you know, "I'd like to know, you know, how many calls came in since August on so and so," we would say, "And, and how were they resolved?" You know, all those people I just mentioned actually keep data on, on their calls. If you were to ask Jody, or Jenny, or Linda, they'd probably tell you, here's exactly, you know, who called, and what were the reasons, and what are the trends, and so on and so forth, so. But it needs to be, to your point. But it needs to be, to your point, and, you know, and that's what the superintendent is directing us to do, is, is come up with a, a system in a, in a way that this is more, you know, managed. And that's why I think the superintendent, I know I'm speaking for him, which I shouldn't, but that's why we added, I think, family engagement to that, to that, to Dr. Breslin's new, to new position.
I would like to hear his opinion, but I mean, other board members want to speak too.
Does Dr. Breslin know that all problems are coming to her now?
That's I heard.
Yeah, that's, yeah. The way I see, because I agree, we need something, and one thing you said that I really, really like is the ticket number. You know, every, every case, every call gets, gets a case number, and then it can be tracked, and it can be, can be followed, because there are really two functions, I would, I would picture this. One is information, you know, to tell, tell the parent, you know, or whoever's calling in, you know, this is how to solve it, okay? The other would be advocacy, to assist in advocating for them. And like you said, the answer's not always going to be what they want to hear, but at least someone to hold their hand going through that process. You know, we can't have whoever's manning this, you know, saying yes to everything, you know, they would take, need to take it to, to the right place. I don't see it as lifting a burden off of us, because we'll be doing the same thing that we do now. Instead of sending it on to Dr. Weisong, we'll be sending it on to Dr. Breslin. But, but, I'm joking, but we would be sending it on to whoever is handling this. And they did, used to have the, the PIC Center, and I recently encountered, or met a person who used to run it, and, you know, her had that function, so she would be a wealth of information about how that was set up, and I'd be happy to put you in touch on that one. But I'm, I'm definitely think that we are long overdue to have this function in, in our district, one place for the parents to call, even if it's the wrong place, one place, and then they can help them navigate the system. And not everybody uses the website. Our website is really, I mean, we're, it keeps getting better, but it's, it, there's a lot of stuff on there. You need to know how to track certain things, especially on the curriculum side. So, and I don't know how you simplify that, so to have somebody who says, you know, let me, you know, do you have your computer open? Let's go through this, you know, you know, just routine functions. So I think it would be great.
I want to go to Dr. Weisong real quick, because I do think this is kind of a operational thing, like, hey, here's our ideas, go figure it out. I mean, I'll be honest with you, right? I mean, this, this is our concern, and.
I want to hear what he has to say.
Yeah, you go get it, go do it.
And I think that this has been a good discussion, and of course, it's, this is month four for me, so I'm getting a lot of, you know, input, and I think I've had, I think I've had three emails since this workshop started from parents on various topics. So it's, some of it's, it's good to read all of that, but you're right, it, it's a lot, and, and I'll tell you, the vast majority of principals I have worked with, all the ones I've met here, nearly all the ones from my prior district, the ones from the employer before that, they want to address their parents' concerns. I, I forwarded a concern this morning to a principal who was on the phone with a parent not five minutes after I forwarded the email. So, so I, I think in almost all cases, the principals want to solve their parents' concerns, or at least address them. Having said that, I do think family engagement has to look different. We're in a competition and choice environment, and our advantage is scale, right? We have lots of facilities, lots of programs, opportunities for everybody, but how do we make sure people don't get lost in our bureaucracy? And I think, I talked about that on my first day here, right, that how do we, how do we feel like both a big school system and a small school system? And so I, I do think we have to think differently. I've met all of the folks in the departments who are working on trying to help parents solve problems. They're, they're all fabulous, they're all doing great work. They are somewhat siloed, because they work for their department, so I think one of the things we've talked about is do we bring those people together as a, whether physically or connected in other ways, right, as a task force or a work group to try to triage some of this together? And, and maybe we do need somebody, you know, maybe there's another, you know, position there for, you know, other types of, of concerns that come up. I do think, to Mr. Chapman's point, we can do some stuff on the website and with our communication to make the chain of command more clear, and one of the things I've encountered here is, the term appeal is somewhat formalized in various processes in the district, but the process doesn't work the same way in each policy or in each topic area. So even that, well, who am I appealing to, you know, can be a little bit confusing. So I, I think we, we have to work on ways to reinforce the message of, ideally, you start with the classroom teacher, because they know your student best, then you go to the principal. Every principal has a supervisor with a title of executive director, and then from there, you, you're coming up to the superintendent, the deputy superintendents. And so we can probably do a better job of repeatedly communicating that that is the chain of command here. But I also think some type of group that's helping to navigate that bureaucracy and solve problems could be helpful. The, the, the ticket numbering and tracking for trends is appealing to me as a, as a data guy. The reality is, we won't capture all of it, because the vast majority of the issues do go to the teacher and the school first, and they're solved there, and we don't hear about them, right? Because yes, we get email or phone calls, but there are fifty-five thousand children, we, we don't get fifty-five thousand emails and phone calls. So the vast majority of the issues are funneling to the right direction. I guess the question is, if we snapped our fingers and we had a whole new apparatus for doing this, would people use that apparatus, or would they still say, nope, I'm just emailing the board chair? So I think that's the, you know, will, will the investment result in more work? Or, you know, will, will it, will it improve our service? And will it make us smarter, or will it just be one more layer? So I think that, that, that's the, I think that's the part we have to have more discussion about, what does that look like?
You know, they may, they may still email us, but Mrs. Foreman made a statement, and I agree with her. It won't take the burden off us, but it might take the burden off you and your staff. So instead of me receiving that email and sending it to you, or sending it through Laura to you, I just send, I say, dear Mrs. Smith, I understand you're having problems getting transcripts for your child. I'm sending you to the Parent Advocate Center, Mrs., someone from that office will contact you within the next twenty-four hours. And that way, it never rises to, it takes a lot of the burden off your staff. Because you're right, if people want, I'm an elected official, you want to call me, you want to write me, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, I'm available. But it may not take the burden off us, but it might take the burden off everyone in this room and, and the lower layers down. That's what I'm really trying to avoid. You know, I just, again, I envision you, like you said, three in the, just once, how much time do you spend? You know, your, your time is valuable to us, so, anyway, yeah, okay.
You have a comment, yeah, if you have a comment, go ahead.
I'll just let everybody roll with that. We get a report about, and, from PeopleSoft, with tickets that are open, where they, the status that they're at, and what needs to, I don't, have you all looked at those reports? Okay, right, was it called Axios Report? So I can see something like that being a benefit to us as a district, because I tell everybody out there, we're a customer-based organization. Our customers are the students, our teachers are our customers, our principals are our customers, talking about the board. The taxpayers are our customers, and if there are issues out there that our customers don't feel is getting the attention, it needs, like the example you referenced, into a student that transferred from another state or district even. If there's that one centralized place, and we have enough on our plate as far as staff goes, doing this, this, and this, and I know we did some reorg on some cross-training at the last meeting, but if there was just a simple, I don't know, do we have a sheet? If you move into the district, see this person, that person, this person, you know, that, it may be as simple as that, maybe not so much as a ticket and all of that, but as a numbers person, yeah, I'd like to see if I, if a parent opened a ticket, maybe they already gone to their, the teacher, didn't get the response, or expected response, that addressed their child, and then they went on up to the AP, still didn't get that expected response, and then they go to the principal, still didn't get that. And now, by this time, they're frustrated, because they're not getting the response maybe that they particularly want, but it might be something more important to them than it is to that parent. So, but equally, it's their concern, and they need to be heard, no matter what. So I think it would be a good idea to have some kind of advocacy center. I mean, there's enough space at the PSC, if you walk through there, I'm sure that Dr. Breslin can find an area that we could actually do that down there. Easy place to get to, easy in and out, that kind of thing, you don't have to deal with so much traffic as you do here. But I, I do think that it's a good, we need to entertain it, and look at it, and see how much weight could be lifted off, I mean, because we all get the emails, copy all of your board members, click it, and then all of us get it. My first instinct is, I wonder, did they talk to the teacher, the AP, principal? Okay, now where are we? So with a ticket, and the progression of that, and explanation of, I had the meeting with the teacher, this is what the result was, on both sides. The teacher put their input, the person who requested the meeting put their input, and you could see the two. I don't know how that would be manageable, but it might be something to think about, because that way you get both sides of the equation in there, and, and then it could be handled before it got up to this level. I'm always open, people call me all the time, and I'm like, oh, hi. Pretend I know them, but I really don't, but it's not, it's still the same. If I knew you, I'd be just as nice. So it's just one of those things that I think that it's a good idea, I do. I think that we should have a ticket system, or a case number, or I don't know what we would call it, to be honest. I don't know if it should necessarily be a ticket, but something along those lines, but.
I wouldn't want it to become every single problem in the district has to have a ticket number. It's just the ones where, and a lot of them are, like the lady who needed the transcript, she apparently contacted the school, and two weeks later, and she called back, and we're getting to it, or the person, actually, if I remember, the conversation was, while this person's on vacation, sorry, call back Monday, they get frustrated. You know, there was some stuff over the summer that'll come up on our next topic, where I, I need my kids, I'd like to see my kid's schedule, and, and it's ten days before school, and it just goes to voicemail, and no one's answering the phone, and. So I don't want every single problem to have to be tracked, and that's just a huge administrative burden and workload. But the ones that get to that point, it's like, well, okay, we tried to handle this at the school level, it's not getting tracked, those are the ones where.
Well, this would be something that I could see be a twelve-month position, or a twelve-month role. You know, we have a lot of, a lot of people don't realize, we have a lot of staff that are here all the time. That would be a role that, that would be, because you have a lot of people moving in from other areas, and they don't know, and our, well, you need to wait till school starts to talk to us or something, but I know that out in the field, everybody's, there's somebody at a school all the time. I've been by a lot of them over the summer. So I agree, it doesn't need to be every little thing, but there are some specific complaints that may not have gotten addressed in a way that probably should have been, for one reason or another, I don't know, but I think that could be part of the system. It's not just to help guide you through our district process as a new person coming in, but also to help direct people, who you go to for this, who you go to for that, kind of thing as well. So I don't know, that PI, PIC, I remember I talked to somebody that was telling me about the same thing, it used to be over here where the storage place is. Is that where it used to be?
I think it was a couple, couple more down.
More down?
From like where the, there, there's like a one block or something there now, but yeah, it was right here.
It could be a virtual group, as Mr. Chapman was talking about, it could be, it could be a center, although that requires more infrastructure, more employees, and it's another cost, but just some, some group of people somewhere that's focused on customer service, that are advocates. And yes, they still work in the bureaucracy, but they're kind of outside the bureaucracy, and they really are the advocate for either the employer or the parent who is stuck with the bureaucracy. Like a good example is, I called the VA yesterday, and I, I need to get in there to do some educate, for my education benefits, and the lady on the phone, you, you have to verify yourself inside this system with a system called ID.me. I try with my passport, I try with my credit record, I try with my driver's license, none of it works. And I call them back, the VA, and I go, hey, none of this, I can't identify myself inside your system so I can get access to my records, and lady's on the phone like, sorry, you gotta call ID.me, and by the way, they don't have phone support, so you gotta just email them. Like, you need to solve this for me, like, I've, I'm, like, if I can't get, if I can't make this work as a retired girl in the Air Force, you know, how, how does, how do other people navigate this system? There's sort of been somebody, you know what, Mr. Tatum, we're gonna send you to the VA client advocate, and they're gonna fix and solve this problem for you. That's the example of people who've just, they've tried to go through the bureaucracy, they're trying to do the right thing, and they're just stuck, and they need an advocate. Whether it's a virtual group, whether it's a, a center where people go, but that's the idea, so, anyway.
I like it.
You have any comments?
I have so many comments.
Well, anyone do you want to express?
Not, not, I don't know, I'm trying to decide.
She's been writing all this time.
I'm trying to decide. I, I a hundred percent believe that customer service should be the focus. I don't think that should be one group's focus, I think that should be every single employee's focus. Every employee that works in this building, they serve other people working at all the schools, and they should all focus on customer service, not just one group.
I agree with that.
And so I don't think we need one particular group that focuses on customer service, because that's everyone's job. That's the principal's job, that's the, that's every single person's job. That, that is, when I call down here to talk about health insurance, that's that person's job to have customer service, to help me with that, and they have, right? So I don't think one particular group about customer service is, I, I, everyone, that's, that is, should be our mantra, everywhere you go. And when I talk to principals, it is their mantra. They understand that. And, and I think the majority of people I've spoken to in this building and the PSC also understand that, that it's customer service all the time, who, no matter who you are. If you go to the website, the school district's website, at the very top of the page, there's a link that says, Parents and Students. If you click on that link, there is a place there where you can request your transcripts. There's a place where you can learn about registering your child, there's a place where you can learn about buses, school choice, health immunizations, VPK, focus, attendance zones, I mean, I could read you the whole list. There is, if you're a parent and you have a question, it's there. If you go to the website and just click on the thing that says Parents. So I'm having a really hard time understanding how adding another layer of bureaucracy is going to help the bureaucracy. I'm really trying to wrap my head around it, I don't see, and, and adding more people is adding another layer of bureaucracy. Adding a ticket system is also adding another layer of bureaucracy. And when everyone should be focused on customer service, then I don't see the value in doing that, maybe I'm missing it. I do, however, really like the idea of putting it out there so that it's really clear, like, hey, if you have a concern, have you talked to your child's teacher? If you haven't, try that. If you have, okay, like, then talk to the principal. Like, I think that's a good idea. I do agree, we get emails where people obviously haven't talked to the principal, that's not gonna stop. That's just like, they're mad, and they're, they're like, I'm gonna haul off and tell the school board, like, that's, you're never going to change that. You can make the prettiest tree highlighted and glitter, and it's not gonna matter, because they're still gonna haul off and email you. And honestly, most of the time, I learn something through those emails. When it comes to advocating, somebody from the outside working in, that's what I like to do. If somebody comes to me and says, hey, I have an issue with that, I go, okay, let me take note. And I'll talk to the superintendent about it or I'll forward it on or do whatever I need to do. Like, that's our job. Like, we're the link from the community to the school district. Like, that's what, part of what we're supposed to do. And so for me, like, I, I don't mind doing that. But most of the time, if somebody contacts me and it's something that's clearly a school-based issue, I'll say, well, have you talked to your school principal? And most of the time, they don't email back because they didn't. So there's that. So I don't, um, I am all for customer service. I'm all for better communication. That is one of the things that I've said for the last seven years. Can we focus on communication, better communication, the bet, more, better. I agree with you. And um, and so I agree with all of that. I'm just not convinced that creating some sort of center is the answer. And I'm not sure creating some sort of group is the answer. But I also think us creating a center or creating a group is not our job. Like, that is our superintendent's job. We can say, hey, we'd like to make sure that customer service is a focus. Hey, we'd like to make sure that the parents are well communicated to. And then say, what's your plan for that? And then hear what his plan is. And maybe his plan will be these things, maybe his plan will be something totally different. He's a highly intelligent person that I think will take all these different pieces into effect and go, oh, well, maybe we can do it this way, or maybe we can do it that way, or have we done it this way? Or, you know, as much as I think AI is creepy, like, when you go to like, wanna return an item from a website, right? There's always like one of those AI chatbot things. Well, how hard would it be to add something like, I don't know, I'm just talking. But like, to add something like that where somebody can go, I need help. How do I request transcripts? And they can send you the link, here it is, right? Like, I, sorry, I don't like AI.
You talk to a.
No, it could be a bot, yeah.
But there's no reason why it can't be something like that, which is not adding bureaucracy. It's not adding a cumbersome system, but you know, I don't know. Anyways, I think there's ways to do it. I just don't think us creating a building or a team or whatever, like, that's not our job. We can say we'd like a focus on communication. We can say we'd like a focus on customer service, which this board has said. And I 100% support those things. But I also think if you go too far, you're removing the teacher and parent, uh, the teacher and principal authority. And you are hurting that relationship because there's already a level of distrust based on society and politics. And if you create a system where now they can usurp that, that hurts that relationship even more. And I have no desire to hurt the relationship between teachers and principals and parents and families. And I think that this could do that if you pushed it too far. So, because they should be working together and they should be communicating with each other. So, I know that I'm being obstinate and I apologize, but I just don't. I'm trying to get my head around it and and like the idea. And I just, maybe, maybe, you know, Dr. Weisong will come up with something and I'll go, oh, that is a great idea. I'm just, I I think our focus should be on the ideas of customer service and 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 engagement and and parental involvement and those types of things. And I think there's lots of ways to do it. I'm just not sure this is the only way to do it. That's all.
In um, i- i- in sake of time, um, I think we've all kind of given our ideas and feedbacks and thoughts. And I do agree that, one, this is a great topic to discuss and figure out, how do we make this better? I do think it's on the superintendent to go now and do. And or not do, but maybe go back and come back with ideas to us to say, here's what I'd like to do, X, Y, Z, flow chart, a chatbot, a center. I don't know, whatever, whatever Dr. Weisong would think. Here's how he believes it would work. And maybe there's some stuff from from similar that you've done or your other, you know, districts, et cetera. Um, I think you've gotten all of our feedback from here to now, let's create your thoughts and then come back to us and we'll go from there. Is that good from the board?
Yeah, I, I.
I mean, I just don't know about going back and forth with all of us. Everybody going back and forth is gonna solve anything.
I won't solve anything, just.
Dr. Weisong?
Real quick, in what Ms. Messenger said, there were two things. Number one is we, so how do we keep Dr. Weisong from getting three? I mean, I, that's what I like to, Dr. Weisong to explore is how do we keep him and his staff from getting three emails during a workshop about my kid's bus is late, I didn't get my transcripts and that kind of, how do we? Something to stop that, whether it's a center or not. And then number two is navigating the website. There probably is a lot of good stuff on our website, but people don't, and like Ms. Foreman said, it's kind of clunky. It's not a super user-friendly website. If you could just call somebody, an advocate, and say, well, gee, oh, you need your kid's transcript? Well, here's a little link right here, just, you got your, like, somebody said it, you got your computer open? Let me walk you through that. Go to the top, click Students and Parents, go down to here. Oh, thanks, gee, that, I really appreciate that. Thank you so much, Mrs. Smith from the school system for helping me, you know, find that. Because it was buried three layers down in a menu. You know, that's that advocate type of thing that, so it's not, it may be there, but the idea is having someone that's an advocate to get you there.
That's.
And again, hold on, again, we're gonna, I don't want to do that. I don't want to go back into a whole other thing.
I got the last word.
I think it's all about communication.
It's my idea, I got the last word.
It's about communication. But I, because again, we're gonna be talking back and forth now, we're all gonna be having our ideas of what everyone else's ideas are. And I think that this is the, this is not our, I, this is our idea that is brought up and we all agree that customer service should be worked on. And now we hire you to go do that and make sure our customer service is fantastic. And you'll come back with great ideas on how to do that. And I trust you on that, that you and your staff will do that. Come back to us and tell us, hey, here's some of those ideas. Because it is needed. Customer service is, should be our, at at our forefront. But we're not gonna decide what we do right here, right now. One, we can't even vote on it. And I think we all five may have different ideas on what we're doing anyways, but that's why we hired you. That's why you get paid the big bucks, right? All right, so I think you have an idea of where we're all coming from and what we want to do. Um, I hope so.
Yes.
If not, we will talk about it at your board briefing or we'll call you later on or shoot you an email later on.
It was evaluation.
All right, so, but great discussion, great topic. I mean, that, that was good. Um, last portion here, FLVS, accommodation slash accommodation of parent requests. Mr. Tatum, this was your idea. So I don't know if you want to start with FLVS or accommodation, parent request, or maybe they were two different things.
Again.
Or I mean, same thing.
It seemed like a story was a good way to kind of kick off the conversation. So over this, about 10 days before school started, I got a number of emails from, from people, from parents at Lakewood Ranch High School and they said, we had put in requests to have schedule accommodations made. And the schedule accommodations are things like, my child is a, a high-level swimmer. Uh, she has a practice in the morning that goes until 7 o'clock and then the afternoon at 2 o'clock. This is when the pool is scheduled. I really need to get her there at these times. I'd like to have first period off. Uh, I'll do my, you know, world history class through FLVS. And then I'd like to leave after sixth period in whatever class I take there. I'll do that FLVS. And so they had kind of, and in the past, they had had these accommodations. And and all of a sudden, 10 days before school, they get a message from Lakewood Ranch High School that says, okay, you can have first period off, but you can't have seventh period off. Or you can have seventh period off, but you can't have first period off. And they, they organize, all summer, they organize their lives on that schedule. And all of a sudden, 10 days before school starts, it's all blown up. And so also, I didn't understand, I talked to some administrators, I talked to Dr. Weisong about, well, why? And and there are some reasons about school security that come up. And you don't want 400 kids leaving the campus necessarily after sixth period. But it just seemed like the default, and that's why I put in there accommodating requests. It seemed like the default was no and you'll beg us to get to yes. And it seems like, I'd like to kind of provide some direction that the, the default answer ought to be yes, let's see if we can make that work as long as it's not unreasonable. Like, we're not having to change a teacher's classroom or move a class around just to accommodate your kid. Nor can you come second period on Tuesday and third period on Thursday and fourth, you know, something regular. But it just, see, the, the requests that were being made seemed reasonable. And I wanted to have a discussion about kind of that general topic of the default answer ought to be something like, yes, because we are in a customer service mode and a competition mode with school choice. And and then I had these parents come to me afterwards and say things like, I actually went to a swim meet and they said, oh, this was awesome. You, we, you know, you're our hero. I'm like, well, okay, but to me, it's what should have happened anyway. But it's building a lot of goodwill. Anytime that we can accommodate a reasonable request from a, a family or a parent is building goodwill within the community. And that, that's what we want. And so it just seems to me, my impression is that the default answer is no and you'll beg us to yes. And I'd like to kind of maybe turn that around a little bit and say, it's yes, unless there's a really good reason to tell you no. And not just a general security or it's a burden on our staff or something like that. I'll answer the discussion there.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know what, how much of a discussion for us. I know that we should all agree on that, that we should probably accommodate as best as possible. Dr. Weisong, I'll start with you to give us your thoughts or do you know right now how, I mean, obviously, you're brand, you, you, you probably weren't even hired maybe for the summertime when it was going on, or if you were, you were just hired and all that. And and I don't know that certain circumstance. But just your thoughts overall on the topic of accommodations.
Sure. Uh, there are a couple of pieces to this. The first is the timing. Um, and and I want to be clear, the vast majority of the personnel who work in this school district are not 12-month employees. The majority of personnel are 10-month employees. And our schools don't have a lot of staff in the summer. And the ones who are there are pretty focused on getting ready for the next year in terms of all the things that have to happen. School counselors are are not in that group of people that that are gonna be there 250 days, you know, in in a calendar year. We're not, we're not staffed that way, we're not budgeted that way. Um, so some of this is, and again, not, not unique to Manatee County, but it's schools do shift down in the summer and with the resources you have, you're getting the critical things done, you know, for the following year. And and your off-contract staff, some of them are in their email every day, but many are not. And and they're not being paid to be. And so, um, so there was a, a piece to this specific issue that was a, a timing piece and how do we serve families in the summer? And I, where I think where this, you know, gets into the grayer area between, you know, kind of policy and operation and budget is if we want to be more responsive in the summer, we have to provide our schools with the staffing to do that, which means we're gonna have to live without something else to afford that. So that's kind of point one. On the virtual piece, you know, uh, you know, th- this is an area that gets really granular because it, it does depend on each school's master schedule, um, you know, and their needs. So we, we get back into this theme and it came up in an earlier, on the cell phone discussion of site-based management versus a consistent policy. Um, and there are a lot of different ways to do this. Um, there are districts where virtual school has really, really caught on and schedules are very customized. And um, there's upside to that and there's also downside. In, in this case, um, I think, um, the school was, was, was doing a course correction and and again, a, a lot of it did happen before I got here. Um, but, um, but the school leadership team had their position and and their viewpoint and it was valid. And the parents had their viewpoint and that was valid too. So, um, so I think what it comes from my vantage point, what I'm looking for is if, if the board wants to, by policy, say that you would like our high schools to be, uh, again, I, I sometimes use the term boutique-scheduled, meaning we start with, you know, you, the, the, the sky's the limit. We'll, we'll customize for you as much as we can. That, that could be a, that could be a, you know, a, a board, you know, framework. And again, that's, there, there's a competition and choice advantage. There's a staffing and scheduling and efficiency disadvantage. Um, or do we continue to tell our principals, you know, use your best judgment? Um, and again, this is, to be clear, this is not about students' access to virtual classes. This specific issue was about coming to campus late or leaving campus early and doing virtual courses, you know, separately. So the issue is not the virtual course, it's, are you doing it on campus or off campus? Um, can you leave early? Can you come late? Which, how late in the day can you come? How early can you leave? So those are, you know, th- those are getting into operational issues. But again, if the board wants to say, you know, we believe in this, you know, kind of, you know, open access scheduling, then, you know, by policy, we could implement something like that. You know, or again, do we want our principals to, you know, to use their, their best judgment? And, um, Mr. Tatum, you used the term reasonable request, right? Different people see reasonable in different ways, um, right? And 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 a principal or a counselor or a schedules, scheduler's viewpoint of reasonable is gonna be different from what a parent or a student might see. So I think that's, I, I think that's really the crux of this.
Okay. Thank you. That's a good, a good explanation. Uh, my first thing would just say, I think if it's within a reasonable request, yeah, you, you, you should be able to look into things. I think that the other side too is, well, just when I look at FLVS and my wife works for FLVS, I don't know if I'm do you? If you, you, now you're talking about a student taking a class and FTE money going somewhere else, while at the same time coming with us and FT. So to me personally, when I, just when I see this, I think of the combinations we could make, absolutely. But let's steer them to where they're still a district kid, a student. Meaning, we have Manatee Virtual and you could do Manatee Virtual, which is still platformed through Florida Virtual, but it allows you to, at least you're in the district. So if you're gonna sign up for world history, it's Manatee Virtual, maybe they did, I don't really know. And and this is very granular because one person. But maybe that will help us be able to navigate through some of that. If it's still a district all the time, you're in the district, instead of being at school and doing a, a, a world history in a lab class, are you able to do it outside at home because of, of your schedule? That's, that to me is some flexibility and things like that I could see us doing. But I, I think this is very, this just doesn't happen a whole lot. Like, this doesn't, I, I don't know if this is a, a, um, an issue of, um, necessarily a policy because I think these are very, in the large scale of our students, I think accommodations we can make for some students is probably, is smaller than a whole district policy. But that's, that's just me. Ms. Gray?
Okay. Boutique scheduling, that's kind of a, a good term for this. There are students that are in AP classes and they're in sports and they're in this program and that program. And the demand of just the eight to three schedule or seven to two, whatever their schedule is. But they have to go get ready for this next event, whether it's sport or drama or a debate club, whatever. I could see where, if that class was in the beginning or of the end of the day, but not in the middle of the day. Like you said, swimming. If they're having to go to practice at 7:00 in the morning and their first class is at 7:30, I can't imagine us trying to get them into sit down and now you're gonna focus on this when they just got changed. So I can see that being, you know, we're accommodating the high functioning or high level of student that's involved in so many other things. Not to degrade any student that's in other programs, but they're doing so much to get college-ready in some cases that doing a, a Florida Virtual, I think, would be a benefit to that student and to the teacher, to be honest with you. They're not having to, you know, I can just imagine a student coming in late after a swim practice or dance practice or band practice and having, that's, any time a student comes in late is a disruption to the rest of the class, whether people want to think of that or not, but it is. So I can see where we could almost, I don't know. I don't know how we could adopt a policy on something like that, but I think it's a, an option that should be explored.
Not so sure that I, you know, a policy is really, in my mind, not what I'm thinking of. It's more like a mindset change.
Right.
Where the default answer is yes, unless there's a good reason for it to be no. And the good, and you're gonna have to justify to the executive, if a parent says, I want my kid to be gone first and seventh period because, for swimming, and the principal says, no, they're gonna have to justify that up the chain. And that, and that the mindset up the chain is, you should say yes, unless there's a good reason to say no. And that we have that, that mindset. Uh, and the other thing then is, at least according to the parents, we were telling them, yes, your child can take FL, an FLVS class, but they have to come to school. I was like, what, I don't understand that. Like, why, why does a child have to come to, if they're taking the, you can go sit in the library and we'll give you a little place over there, but you gotta be here first period. I didn't understand that either. But it's a mindset change, you're right. A policy to cover all this would be too cumbersome and you'd have to have. but you gotta be here first period, I didn't understand that either, but it's a mindset change, you're right, a policy to cover all this would be too cumbersome, you'd have to have exceptions, but maybe just a mindset shift from the senior leadership of the district that says, look, say yes, unless there's a reason to say no. And, and however Dr. Weisong would like to communicate that mindset shift, is kind of what I wanted to talk about today. If we all kind of agree that the answer should be yes, look, try real hard to say yes. Only say no when it's absolutely necessary, and general ideas about safety and this and that, I get it, but, you know, anyway.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with that at all.
Well, um, our family was a pioneer of the, uh, FLVS in, in school. Um, our daughter did half a day at school and half a day at Florida Virtual, but it was a private school, and we had to pay full tuition. And, um, there, they said yes, but it was so much smaller, her class was so much smaller than what our current principals are dealing with, you know, they've got a seven hundred kids, you know, that they're, uh, that they're trying to accommodate, so I get it, you know, um, and in order to accomplish what was best for our student, we had, you know, private did it. Um, do we want to let kids, especially the high-performing ones, go to, uh, to private school to get what they want? You know, I, I hate to see us veer that way, I think we have in the past. Um, but, the mindset, like you said, a mindset's gotta change, and that, that boils down to customer service, so.
I was just gonna say, to me, like, everything you're saying, it just sounds like customer service, which is, once again, the thing that we just talked about, is like, that comes from the superintendent making those decisions, and how he's going to make that happen, and to me, like, a lot of that is just, it's customer service, and if, if it is reasonable, which, you know, I've never made a master schedule for a high school with two thousand children, so I don't know if that is reasonable. But if, if that is a reasonable request, and then, that's fine, but, you know, um, I agree with you, I think it's a, once again, it's a communication and customer service, which is the last two things we talked about, which are really gonna be in the superintendent's purview, and it sounds like it was handled, you know, so it's just you know, him creating those, that culture or systems, or whatever, that he feels like he needs to do to make those things happen.
And there was a little customer service aspect to it, to tying into our last discussion, is, the reason the parents eventually got to me, they were like, look, it's ten days before school, I'm calling the school, it's going to voicemail, counselors aren't available, they won't answer my emails. Uh, all that together, you know, it, these two things kind of tying together, so it is customer service, and then, and then do we wanna, last question is, since we're talking about, do we wanna explore some option, that's not too expensive, I don't know what not too expensive means, that over the summer, there is some ability for parents, someone's working on the schedule, so they just don't get surprised a week before school starts. Because that was one of the parents, a couple of the parents' feedback to me was, look, up north in Pennsylvania, I knew my kid's schedule in the middle of July, and I could set up my life for when school starts. And all of a sudden, they get the schedule, and it's not what they thought it was gonna be a week, and now their whole life is, they gotta redo their whole life, is that something?
Well, I don't know, I would, I don't, they're working on this, the schedule from the end of school, probably March, April, May, it, as, as you signed up for classes, as students signed for classes in that time period, they start working the master, and if you go to the assistant principal that's in charge of the master schedule, you see it on the whiteboard, like, the, and so, I think that, um, I don't, I don't know if anyone up here, of any of us know actually what it takes to do that. I would, I would say to your point, Dr. Weisong, can we get it done as early as possible, right? So we can let them know as early as possible, but even, even schedules aren't known, like, I yeah, I, it's, it's kind of tough, I mean, kids come and go, I, I don't, that, that, that would be an oper, I mean, I don't know.
I mean, there are so many variables, Chairman, I mean, the, first of all, we're doing more hiring than we have before, right, principals are hiring all summer, a- and so that's, that's a priority. In a high school, your master schedule's gonna be changing based on the coming and, and goings of, of faculty.
Kids.
Um, you're gonna have, right, you, you, right, you have kids leaving, kids coming, you have requests coming in all summer. Um, and, and again, you've also got all the, um, the maintenance pieces, the custodial pieces, the in- instructional materials, all the other things that have to be in place for that first day. Um, a- a- you know, and, and again, at a, at a, at a time when you have the least amount of staffing available to do that work, so, um, and, and you know, w- when we get to the point of kind of, I think at a future workshop, sharing some of my, um, thoughts related to the entry plan and conversations with different stakeholder groups, I think there are some elements of staffing that we need to look at, and when we do, we, you know, the summer piece may be, um, you know, ma- may need to be part of it.
I mean, that's a case-by-case basis, I mean, I don't think it's going to be a mass thing. Um, I don't know, I, I don't know when the master schedules are posted on individual school websites. I'm sure there's information there, I hate to use that, go look at the website, um, but is it a certain?
My, my daughter got hers probably two or three days before school started.
Oh, wow, that's.
Yeah, they're in focus.
It's in focus.
Wow, so.
I mean, because
Only two or three days before school started?
Because you are
Doing so many things.
You, you have
Yeah, I understand that.
Twenty-two hundred kids, and, and you don't know who's coming in and out, um, you know, uh, school, uh, class size amendment. So, hey, I've gotta add another math teacher for Algebra One, because I've got too many. So yeah, I mean, I don't know, I mean, so, I agree with Dr. Weisong, it's about, if, if we wanna make that quicker and less burdensome, hiring staff may do that, but there's a price tag to that. That then, are we okay with that price tag, or, and then what are we gonna remove from that?
Well, even if they, even if there was a tentative schedule that could be shared, I mean, that goes
But then, but then you're gonna parents like, wait a minute.
That happens, parents will go and
Correct, it does.
They will go and look and focus, oh, well, it says I'm in this, and they're like, and all the people from school are like, no, don't trust that yet.
Correct.
Still getting worked out, you're not supposed to see it yet, because they'll count on it, and that's not really what it is. So tentative is not, I personally don't think that's a good idea, but again, we're dipping into management, this is not our decision to make. And if he wants to come forward and say, this is my solution to that, cool, we'll have that conversation then.
Yeah, 'cause that's one, that's out of my real houses.
But I completely agree, but being as, as accommodating as reasonably possible, we should.
Right.
I mean, we should, but, you know, if my kid wants to take AP psychology, and it's offered first period, because there's only twenty-five kids that wanna take it, I shouldn't, I shouldn't be the one that moves it to seventh period because my swim schedule. You know what I mean? And so, so, there is a balance there, you know.
Offered anyway.
And, and, and not anymore, yeah. Um, so, so anyways, but I do agree, it's a mindset of, let's try to be accommodating as possible, there's no question. Good stuff, good stuff.
Open and
Any, uh, any other comments, anybody, we're good? Dr. Weisong, you've got some homework?
Always.
Among other things. Alright, um, long day, but good day, uh, have a good rest of the week, we are adjourned.